All right. Now that all the council members are present, I call to order the March 5th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency Finance Authority, and we will begin with the land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous people who still are connected on this land on which we gather. The council did not meet in closed session this evening. Now, we would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by the River City High School Girls Wrestling Team. Please stand and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just so.
Thank you. It is so wonderful to have you join us here tonight. Such an honor to have our champions here. I'm gonna go over really quick what we do before item one for public comment, but what I'm going to do is bring a presentation for our River City High School Girls Wrestling Team before the public comment period. So, once I finish with this, we'll go into the presentation. Okay, as is noted on our agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under item one for public comment, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council, an issue is not listed on the agenda, and we do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to fill, please fill out a request to speak card and return it in to the clerk. We accept the request to speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item, and tonight for anybody who's here to speak, please, you know, fill out a request to speak card and provide it to our clerk. And once the staff report has been read and we open the item up for a public comment, the clerk will announce your name for you to walk to the podium to speak. Now, in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and we ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes that I will announce. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog clip card, which indicates which agenda item clerk is currently considering. And we also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstration. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted, and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting. Next, for our guests here, who we are so honored to have your presence here, we have a presentation under general administration within the city manager's offices, a presentation of the proclamation recognizing the Women's History Month and honoring the River City High School Girls Wrestling Team. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then ask if anybody from the girls wrestling team, I know you weren't giving this heads up, but if you would like to share a few words, we really would love to hear from you about how, you know, this journey, what brought you to this journey, and anybody who would like to speak, what brought you to this journey, and we'd love to hear your experience. And then we will go down and take a photo. In the meantime, you could just, you know, just put a few thoughts together and decide who would like to speak. Whereas the city council, West Sac, City of West Sacramento proudly celebrates Women's History Month by honoring the achievements and contributions of women in our community, and whereas the River City High School Girls Wrestling Team demonstrated outstanding skill, determination, and teamwork throughout the season, finishing their league competition undefeated and securing the Monticello Empire League Tournament Championship, and whereas the River City High School Girls Wrestling Program has grown tremendously over the past decade, expanding from just two participants to eighteen dedicated student athletes this season, and whereas the program has not only fostered excellence at the high school level, but has also produced collegiate le, level wrestlers, including Mitchell Commission, who went on to win a junior college national championship, Maryam Sharik, who is currently wrestling at Baker University in Kansas, and Noah Arnold, who is wrestling at Simpson College in Iowa, and whereas the success of these athletes is a testament to their hard work, the dedication of their coaches, and the growing support for women's wrestling, which is why we're all here in West Sacramento and beyond. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that the city council of the City of West Sacramento hereby recognizes and congratulates the River City High School Girls Wrestling Team for the historic championship, commends their contributions to the achievement of women's athletics, and celebrates their role in inspiring future generations of female athletes. Congratulations. If anybody would like to share a few words?
Hello, my name is Lily Dempsey. I'm a senior at River City High School, and I would like to speak on behalf of the Girls Wrestling Team. So, this is my final year, as you know, and I have been wrestling for three years along with these two over here, my best friends, Sky and Danny. Over the years, there have been a lot. We've gone through so much together. We started out, we wrestled, and we've grown together. As a team of girls, we've come to face a lot of adversities, but we've overcome, we've challenged and defeated, and it's been really amazing. I've made so many friends. I think everybody has made so many friends, lifelong, meaningful relationships. The coaches, they've lifted us up further than we could ever have gone before. I can honestly say I'm a different, better person because of girls wrestling.
Awesome. Thank you. Before we go down for a photo with any of the council members, would you like to share a few words? You go first, yeah.
Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight. Am I going? As you spoke, I started tearing up. We've got somebody else crying as well. This, this is about community, this is about womanhood, and it's about facing adversity and doing incredible things together, and it is such an honor that this is West Sacramento. I remember watching the news that West Sacramento Wrestling, what's happening, watched it and was immediately inspired, posted it to social media, shared. To see the strength in all of you today is incredible. I was chatting with a friend earlier about wrestling and kind of, you know, how it came to be and with women's wrestling. Women's wrestling didn't exist at the high school that I went to, it wasn't even an option. And so, that was a lot of schools, and so, women had to wrestle on men's, and they faced discrimination, adversity. Men, male coaches refused to train them, and I noticed you have male coaches here tonight, which probably love training you. Oh, and a female coach, wonderful, thank you. Thank you. And it's just, it's incredible to see this, and so, congratulations. We are so proud that you represent West Sacramento so well.
So, I could not help, like, cheesing as you were talking, because I remember I played high school basketball and college basketball, and I am still friends with some of the players I played with in high school, I was, I was local, and it just brings back such wonderful, beautiful memories of just what it means to be on a team, what it means to support other girls and other women, and I am who I am today because of the sports I played in high school. And so, you are, one, so very fortunate, but also, wow, thank you so much for representing West Sacramento, representing yourselves, and I hope that you really are taking in this moment, because, like I said, I look back on, on high school, and I feel like maybe I just, I didn't appreciate it at the time, what it meant to be a senior and everything, and so, congratulations. Thank you so much, and just, it's, it's really wonderful, it's really beautiful.
All right.
Yeah.
I can speak after you, or I can speak before you.
Oh, I am so sorry.
No, no, please, you are the star of the hour. Why don't, why don't you speak, and I will defer, please, sir.
See that look she gave me? I've known her for a very long time. I had the honor of coaching her son, so, you know, it's been, it's been truly an honor to get to coach, you know, this, this team that we have here, and, you know, first, I want to, you know, thank you, Martha Guerrero, Meg Guerrero, and the rest of the council for having us here. Like, this is truly, truly something that I've never got to do before, so, recognize these girls is awesome. I got the rest of the coaching staff, you know, I'm Dawn, this Carlo, Coach Stolpe, and Coach Franny Harold. These young ladies, we've had the ability to coach them since, since they were freshmen, and they all walked in not knowing what wrestling was. And so, after some, you know, we had COVID four years ago, so you hear some of them, like, they only got two years because the first year was COVID. And some of these ladies are freshmen, and we're gonna get the next four years. Women's wrestling is now recognized in forty states. It's truly an accomplishment. For the last twenty years, we fought to get here, to get to where we can have a league and we can have a sport and where it's separate from boys, and, well, this year, we have a league championship, which is also the first one they've ever had. So, yeah, you know, I can't say how proud I am and the rest of the coaching staff for what they have accomplished. Like, you know, they put countless hours in, five days a week, three hours a day, every Saturday through Christmas, giving up their, their Christmas break to train, and, you know, we had seven of these ladies in the championship with the league. Hey, we had all ten of our athletes make it. We, we had, we had regional champions, and then even at, as the masters, Lily Dempsey took sixth place, Kelly Cook took seventh place, and so, for us to have this level of athletes competing with just four years of wrestling is truly something. I want to say thank you to all of them, and, you know, thank you for having us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If only you could see what I see right now. If only I could hold up a mirror and go down the row and show each one of you what it is to look like, what I see as a champion. You know, you, you all had to overcome immense adversity and teamwork in order to be here tonight, in order to wear those Letterman jackets, in order to wear those team colors, and in order to sit amongst your community and your coaches, and the parents who are so proud of you, who drove you to practices, who forewent their own plans, in order to see you stand proud and get honored by your city council. When I read in the news your accomplishment, one thing I did was I immediately reached out to our public information officer, and he said, "You know what? The rest of the council's already done this," and I loved that, because we are your biggest champion. We are rooting you along. We might be sitting on an elevated platform tonight, but tonight, you are the ones that are on a pedestal. When I, after you leave tonight, after all the pomp and circumstance, all the noises, and we've taken the picture, I want you to remember a few things. Critics can't stop you. You've already broken the mold of what it looks like to be a female athlete, and people will remind you, "Oh, that's different." No, it isn't. You own that power, and you, you deliver it to others behind you, and you show them how to walk a path that's fraught with broken glass and potholes and challenges. Show them how you've overcome them. Tonight, I saw our speaker take the podium, and after about thirty seconds, two of her colleagues took her side, and that, by, oh, that was so symbolic. That was a sign as I got her back. And whether or not she needed that moment, I did, because I loved watching that sisterhood, that fellowship, that team sportsmanship. Nobody knows how much darkness you've put your greatest champions into radiate so much light. But what I will say is, keep going. There is something that I would love to read to you, strong, committed, motivated young women, and that is a quote by Rachel Marie Martin, says, "And she felt her heart get lighter that day. She stopped comparing. She stopped letting other, others put their two small boxes over her potential. She stopped listening to critics and started listening to the hopes of her dreams. She started to see her strength, her bravery, and her beautiful heart, and in that moment, the impossibilities felt possible. Tonight, you represent all of that to all of us. Congratulations, and women, young champions."
Councilmember Alcala.
I want to say how proud of you we all are. You heard everyone up here. And I'm the oldest member here, I'm sixty-four years old. We didn't have it in our school, we didn't have wrestling, but we had great wrestlers, anyway. When I was going to school, I often wondered how some of the girls could be such great wrestlers. Well, some of them came from large families, like the Cardozas and the Sanchezes, they could take any guy down. And I often wondered why, and I, and I read up on it once, and I did that again when I knew we were going to give you this award. The reason girls are such great wrestlers is, one, they're more flexible. They have better endurance and stamina. They have also a lower center of gravity. That's what they tell us. But I think, most importantly, you have a great passion for what you do, and that's what makes you a champion, makes you shine. So, thank you so much for being here and for making us proud.
So, we'll go down and take this photo, but I just want to say it takes a village for all of us to be where we're at today, and to all of those who stood by your side and supported you, your parents, your family, those who cheered you on, your friends, thank you. Thank you all for making this historic moment possible. We are so proud of you. So, thank you so much. And let's go down and take this photo. We'll take a few different photos. I want to make sure the family members aren't one of them. Going down in history, guys.
Show me your muscle. There you go.
While we're doing this, can we have everybody move back because this is blocking. We've got a big group. So everybody move back like four steps. Keep going back, 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 back.
Now this brings us to item one, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. And each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak under public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Kimber Goddard.
Good evening, Madam.
Ms. Goddard, is this related to item three?
Oh, I know, I thought you said, you just called me up on items not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Yeah, I checked the box, not on the agenda. Right?
Okay.
This is not on the agenda.
Oh, it isn't, okay.
Right. Thank you. Good evening. Trying to encourage public input at these meetings is a very difficult thing. I've been working at it a long time. A lot of people ask me if it does any good to come down here and say what they think. And of those that do, sometimes after they give it a try, they've told me that they're not coming back based on the experiences that they sometimes have. Public hearings, not this one, thank you, usually start too late. People can't stay, and to give their three minutes of input, it's just too long a stretch. They need to get home, they have kids, of course, and they have to get ready for work and the kids ready for bed. Uh, these meetings should end by ten or eleven o'clock at night, they say. They just can't do it this long. Citizens and even some of the planning commissioners don't have time to read thousands or more pages of staff reports without a table of contents seventy-two hours before a complex public hearing on these large developments. You might be similarly challenged. And if I heard it once, I've heard it a thousand times over the years. Where were the public workshops on that huge project? I didn't even know, I don't know what's going on. Tonight I'm gonna answer the question. Does it do any good to come down here and work at trying to increase public participation? I'm happy to announce the settlement of the Yarborough litigation. I made sure that all aspects of the settlement were public. I'll produce a link on the community Facebook page so that you can read every detail of it. It's very soon. Here's a quick, brief synopsis, though. First, as a result of that settlement, uh, David Stroud, the developer, paid my attorney's fees in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Next, I've written an ordinance to be placed in the West Sacramento Municipal Code that you'll be viewing and considering as a new law, giving citizens increased public participation protection at these and other large development public meetings. Public hearings will be at the front end of the agenda. Public hearings like this one on large developments will no longer be all-nighters and will end by eleven o'clock at the latest unless the majority of the council makes a very unpopular vote to continue later. Lengthy agendas and staff reports will be, will have table of contents and be produced for the public and city leaders at least a week early instead of seventy-two hours before the meeting. The Planning Commission is going to receive some training. Wonderful. The city will cooperate with me on an agenda and will pay for and hold two citywide public workshops on matters of great importance to the community. On June thirtieth, there'll be a flood workshop, and on September thirtieth, a traffic workshop. Citywide invitation will go out so that everyone can come up to speed on what is happening with these important areas. To those of you who courageously spoke, emailed, participated, and were at the Yarborough appeal, congratulations. This is the success. I'm seriously hoping, uh, that there's something been learned all around, that we don't have to go through this again after tonight's meeting. Does it do any good to come down here and make effort to change things? It certainly does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard.
Robin Davis.
Hello, I'm Robin and I live in my hundred-and-sixty-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home-on-wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. Uh, I don't have many updates, just waiting for the tiny home-on-wheels ordinance to return back to the council agenda. And we were able to send the draft ordinance to SAC Sewer to see if their staff can come up with any kind of proportional impact fee options for tiny homes. I also got a preview of our new Permit Pal tool, and I'm hoping that we will soon be able to add a tiny home-on-wheels option to the application if all goes as planned. Uh, however, while navigating the application, I noticed that impact fees weren't listed and the system instructs, instructs users to call staff for the, that information. That process doesn't seem very transparent and could end up creating more work for staff. We've invested tens of thousands of dollars in impact fee nexus studies to determine specific fees and their purposes, yet these fees are still difficult to figure out for some reason. Uh, but the portal is very user-friendly and easy to use and provides specific permit costs based on zoning and your area. So it seems, um, it seems like at least an estimate for impact fees could be included as well. We could include the Impact Fee Reduction Pilot Program estimated cost to those designated areas as well. These fees are a significant part of the cost to build in the city, so it's crucial that we inform people about potential costs early in the process. So just a suggestion, but a great application to implement. So thank you to everyone for moving that forward. Lastly, we have one of our very, very large developments on the agenda today and several other housing projects happening in the city. It was last reported by our planning department that the average size of the single-family homes being built in West Sacramento since 2018 was two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet. So I'm curious how that average will change with the new developments coming up. Uh, but as always, please consider joining our West Sacramento Tiny Homes Facebook group for updates on the ordinance and for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Pat Flynn.
Good evening, Ms.
Thank you, Mayor Barrow and council members.
There are many events that have happened over my lifetime here in West Sacramento and recent events that you should all be concerned about and at least show care to, to public members. I have concerns and I worry, not only for my family, but all the families that live in West Sacramento. School evacuations are especially when the buses are kept north of the Barge Canal. A concern for me in the event that there could be a flood or any other disaster that could happen in West Sacramento. Parents work outside of West Sacramento and could have a hard time, um, getting to their children. So if they are bused to a different area, how will they be notified? You know, and that's the school district's responsibility, I understand that, but the city would have to cooperate. Where will the students be taken, um, is a, is a concern. Will the students be taken outside of West Sacramento? We have many disabled people that need help. Are those people being factored into the overall existing evacuation plan? Non-existent evacuation plan, because we haven't seen it. Citizens need to be educated and informed to avoid panic. Because of the development projects that came forward in 2006, which are the very same developments coming forward this year, a group Save Our City was formed. We were advocates for develop, for responsible growth and proper and adequate infrastructure. We loved our Southport Framework Plan that won awards for, for its conception or its architectural design. We knew our levees were in bad shape at the time and needed to have repairs. So we passed flood tax to help repair those levees, knowing that we would also need federal and state funding. We needed additional fire and police to keep up with growth. We advocated for public safety. We're still advocating for public safety almost twenty years later. We still find ourselves in the same position, except our green belts, ag land, animal habitats, and Southport Framework Plan have all been mitigated and amended away. Higher densities, additional cars, more people literally cram, cram down our throats in a twenty-five-mile-square bathtub. We are currently faced with unsafe roadways, major traffic issues including major accidents, more crime, and levees that will not reach flood designations as advertised by the city, which has been known by the city all along and not been shared with the public. I find that very disturbing. Your decisions are destroying our beloved city. No major family restaurants, a declining unkept shopping center, businesses closing and leaving West Sacramento. We have very high taxes that need to be looked at. I am so disappointed in your actions. Money is not everything, especially spent and unmanaged wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm closing the public comment. Moving on to item three, which is a public hearing regarding the appeal of the Planning Commission certification of the Liberty EIR and approval of vesting tentative subdivision map number five-one-one-two. I have a whole, long list of things to read in case you want to have a seat. Okay. And, uh, just for the process, I'll explain to you the process. There's a process. I think, I think he's third, right? He's third on the list. He's, he's third, so he won't be speaking yet.
Okay.
He's what? Fourth on the list. Fourth. Okay. Okay. I am required, according to this hearing process, to read the following, and then I will, um, proceed in providing the guidance, um, that we are looking at here for this, for today's, um, hearing. The Liberty Appeal Hearing Procedure Summary. The city council's adopted hearing procedure policy, Roman numeral three dash A dash number three requires that the mayor read a summary of the procedures into the record. And the following is that summary, which can also serve as a script for the hearing process. The mayor will open the hearing. The mayor will ask all members of the council to publicly announce any testimony or evidence received outside of the hearing process, such as ex parte communication. The mayor will ask all council members to announce any conflicts of financial interest with a material effect, and member shall disqualify herself. Staff will present the staff report, place relevant documents into the record, and respond to questions from city council. Staff may present any testimony and relevant evidence not previously presented in the written report. Evidence is relevant if it proves or disproves a material fact in dispute. The mayor will specify the time of the appellant and applicant has for his or her presentation and rebuttal. The appeals will be heard in the order received. Mr. Goddard, the appellant, will be given twenty minutes to present their appeal. No testimony or witnesses will be heard at this time. All public comment testimony will be heard during public comment testimony, see number six. And the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to respond. No, no testimony or witnesses will be heard at this time. All public comment testimony will be heard again during public comment testimony, see number six. Six is members of the public and/or individuals in support of either the appellant or the applicant will be given the opportunity to present testimony. Public comment will be limited to three minutes each person. At that time, if, once three minutes are up, I, um, the microphone will be turned off by the clerk, because there's a button here and I can't ever find it. The mayor will specify the time the appellant and applicant has for his or her response to testimony or evidence. Appellant will be given five minutes to respond, but may not introduce new testimony or evidence or restate direct testimony. Applicant will be given ten minutes to respond, but may not introduce new testimony or evidence or restate direct testimony. Staff may provide responses to testimony received from the appellant applicant public and may be asked to answer questions from the city council. The mayor will close or continue the hearing, and the city council will deliberate on the matter and adopt findings if appropriate. The final decision may be deferred for preparation of draft findings consistent with a preliminary decision. At this time, I will now go through the script that is in compliance with what, um, has been read. Do any council members have any testimony or evidence received outside of the hearing process, such as ex parte communication? I will begin to my right, Councilmember Orozco.
I thought you were in court. Mm-mm. She said no.
Councilmember Early.
I'm a no as well.
Councilmember, uh, may I pretend, um, the future holds. And Councilmember Alcala.
And in my case, I have been speaking with members of the public, various members of the public, as I held, uh, town hall meetings and I'm out engaged very much with the public, um, and received, you know, emails and, you know, from concerned, um, uh, individuals. Being out there, there's a lot of communication that I've had with many individuals.
Do we need to note the official emails that we have received from our, because all of us receive email?
Yes, well, if you'd like to, if you've read them.
Yes, I have received emails. I, I do read my emails. I do read my emails, folks. So, yes.
The mayor, do we need to modify if we do have received emails?
Yes, if you would like to modify it.
Modify received emails. Anybody else? Say? Okay.
And, and then, um, also have talked to public members. Um, not, um, the, not what, uh, the folks that will be presenting today, but absolutely have talked to community members. That's our job.
Yes, I, I see a lot of community members even here that I've spoken with. Okay. The next question is, do any council members have any conflicts of financial interest with material effect, and if so, um, a member shall disqualify themselves?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is me. I need to recuse myself at this time because I live adjacent to the project. So I will be.
May I pretend, the future holds. We will give you a moment here to consider your things. The staff. Sorry. Now you can get the staff.
You want us to go one by one for the financials and say no as well?
No, no, as long, as long as you're fine, I think, I don't know. Do, um, do we need to go over the financials one by one? Should we? Councilmember Orozco. Your answer to the question, um, and any financial conflict?
No.
And, um, there is a, um, FPPC requirement, um, within the year where we do report, um, to, um, you know, Secretary of State, and when we have any campaigns, we do report whether, um, we receive fin, um, funding. And when we have any campaigns, we do report whether we receive funding. And in the last year, I have not received any funding. So that's the report that we have, I provide. So just to let you know, there is a last year that was. But in the last year, I have not received any that I can recall. But if it's anything more than $250, you are not allowed to take part in this decision. That is, that was the last requirement, I think. And I did ask for the city attorney for clarification about that, just to make sure if anything can go above that. But I don't think anybody else has. Am I in a timer, Madam Clerk?
I want to disclose that in 2016 and '20, I believe, that I gave financial support in the amount of $5 from the developer in this particular case and in this matter in the last, in 2024, nothing that exceeded $250, as I understand that this was going for the council. Can't be sure of it, but I want to make sure that for the sake of being thorough that I do disclose it for the record that it is public in case that is in fact.
Thank you. And it does not impact your decision in this case as a result?
No, City, and that would.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know. And this time, staff will now present the staff report and place relevant documents into the record and respond to questions from the City Council. And staff may present any testimony or relevant evidence not previously presented in the written report. Evidence is relevant if it proves or disproves a material fact in dispute. And just for the record, please say your name and your position.
You don't need to power my name, do you?
You. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Justin Hardy, senior planner and the Liberty Project Manager for the entire time I've been here working on this project. Tonight, I'm here to present the appeal of Liberty Project on the certification of the EIR and the vesting tentative subdivision map. I am joined with Bob Locker-Mazzino, who is a consultant that has been assisting with the project since roughly 2018, who's sitting next to Mr. Hardy. And I am also joined with a variety of staff members representing departments who've all contributed bringing this item before you tonight. I'm hoping this presentation will come up.
Oh, you're waiting for the presentation? Give you a minute. During that minute, I would like the attorney who's providing guidance for us for this hearing to introduce yourself, please.
All right, just say email, stand up. Name is. Justin, I think you can get started on project background at least while we're waiting. So the outline should have come up. Covering the project at a high level, just provide some background since it hasn't been before you. And then the appeals of the Planning Commission actions and then staff recommendation following. The brief snapshot of the project is roughly 342 acres. It's proposed by the Peig family. The Liberty-specific plan also has other associated land use entitlements along with a specific plan. The project proposes 1,503 units.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure.
They're having a hard time hearing you.
The project proposes 1,503 units, 10,000 square feet of commercial, 13,000 square feet of private recreation space, including a 25 acres worth of parks, one of which is a nine-acre community park. Liberty is one of the three large projects in Southport, Yarborough being one of them, River Park is the other. Have a map showing all of those for the public when it comes up. As part of the project, there's a list of entitled requirements, starting with a clearance of the certification of the EIR, adopt the findings of fact, statement of overriding considerations, and the mitigation monitoring plan and reporting programs, excuse me. It also encompasses the Liberty-specific plan, vesting tentative subdivision map. Here we go. Here's a map of the three projects. Liberty is in the upper right in the northeast village of the Framework Plan. And River Park is directly to the south, and Yarborough is further to the east in the southeast corner. already want to see what clearance or adopt the Liberty-specific plan as another entitlement requirement, approving of the vesting subdivision map, admitting of the zoning code, zoning map, amend the Framework Plan, amend the General Plan, and approve a development agreement. The project chronology, the project was filed in October of 2013. In May 2016, we held two scoping meetings. I believe both were held at the Marina. In August 2017, the EIR was circulated and the notice of preparation was issued. In June 2024, Planning Commission held an informational workshop to discuss the project. We didn't bring the entitlements forward, just the discussion of what's be coming for them later. September 2024, the draft documents were published for the October meeting. From October 2024 to January 2025, the commission held four individual hearings during that time period. On January 30th, the Planning Commission took the following actions. They determined sequo clearance. They certified the EIR, which is the draft environmental impact report from 2017, the final environmental impact statement, impact report, excuse me, September of 2024 was when it was published. They adopted the findings of fact, the statement of overriding considerations. They adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting plan as part of their action. In addition to that, the commission approved the subdivision map for the project, which has the primary authority on both of those. They, in their motion, recommended that the council adopt the Liberty-specific plan, amend the zoning code and zoning map, amend the Southport Framework Plan, amend the General Plan 2035, and approve a development agreement. Appeal of the commission's actions more specified. We already covered the procedure at the beginning. So I'll move on to the appealable actions. Is a certification of the EIR, Resolution 25-1 PC. Approval of the vesting tentative subdivision map, 25-3 PC. The recommendations from the January 30th Planning Commission action are not appealable, that were recommendations to the City Council. There were two appeals filed at the time in the required appeal period. One with Mr. Goddard on the fourth. Mr. Kiesling admitted one on the sixth, which was withdrawn on March 4th. We were provided with that as a memo with regard to the settlement agreement. Responses to appeals will occur in the staff report. They will also occur in the city attorney memo, the flood protection manager memo, the fire chief memo, and the applicant attorney. I'll start off with claim number one from Mr. Goddard. New information became available after the EIR was publicized. Substantial unforeseen impacts occurred at the draft EIR publication, supplemental or amended or new EIR, and recirculation of the draft environmental report. Claims further elaborated in subsequent claims are covered in the staff report. Staff's response, claims were not supported by substantial evidence. Changes in the regulatory environment do not warrant recirculization of the EIR. The statutes and guidelines of the effective time and the release of the notice of preparation govern the content of the EIR. More detailed responses under subsequent claims are again included in the staff report. Number two, claim number two is the EIR evaluation of flooding. Dramatic change in risk assessment. New and more severe risk information became available. The city's effort to enhance flood protection ineffective. No future efforts will ever be enough to protect Southport. Staff's response, claims in the FEIR revision to impact severity under WP7 is less than significant with mitigation to significant and unavoidable. There was no change in the EIR's assessment or description of flood risk. The impact conclusion was reflected to correctly reflect the General Plan EIR. Mitigation measures allowed for in-lu fee payment and require the disclosure for flood risk maintained in the EIR. Additionally, levying system improvements have lessened the risk of forthcoming. Improvements will also further lessen the risk over time. The regional efforts have also been approved that reduce the city of West Sacramento's flood susceptibility with impact and improvements to Folsom Dam enhancements, the Sacramento Weir, and the levy to the north of the Weir. The appellant provides no substantial evidence to support these claims. Claim number three, the EIR does not properly analyze risks associated with emergency evacuation. Flood risks have grown over time. Southport roadway insufficient to accommodate emergency evacuations. Flood risk has lessened. Staff's response, city is well-prepared to initiate evacuation or partial evacuation. And the draft EIR conclusion concerning emergency evacuation impact has, that seven is still accurate. Claim number four, schools was eliminated from the EIR in the Liberty project. The school was eliminated from the project as a mitigation measure. References under staff's response, that Washington Unified School District owns the property and has been deleted from the project. The property is owned again by Washington Unified, not the project applicant. Claim number five, characterization of flood risk. Appellants cites a description of an HDR engineering report, evidence of flood risk. Appellants question city compliance with various state and legislative requirement for flood protection. Staff's response, the HDR description of the West Safka envisioned platinum award for sustainable infrastructure was recognizing efforts to implement the Southport levy improvement project. The project brings the levy to compliance with state and federal levy criteria. Additionally, city is in compliance with legislative requirements with call for 200-year flood protection. We are on task to do that on or before the required date. Claim number six is the hearing process, insufficient hearing process. Eight months from June 2024 Planning Commission workshop to January 2025 hearing, the Planning Commission has been deliberate in its consideration of the project, taking actions on January 2025, and all five public hearings were held. In addition, the entire hearing process, including the two scoping meetings, the project has been increased for noticing to 1,000 radius feet versus the 500 that's required. In staff's recommendation, recommendation, it recommends Resolution 2531 denying the appeal, thereby upholding the Planning Commission's decision of the January 30th, 2025 actions. That concludes my presentations. The applicant is here and their representative. I'm happy to answer any questions we have.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Are there any questions among the council members? Mr. Attorney, I just have. No, you know what? I'll ask my questions after. I will ask various members of the staff who prepared memos to come up after some additional questions and clarification. We do not leave in case this breaks on a little longer. Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Okay. I have one applicant for this appeal. Mr. Kimber Goddard. Mr. Goddard, you will be given 20 minutes to present your appeal at the public, this public hearing before City Council and to the public. This time, no other testimony or witnesses is allowed to speak until all public comment and testimony will be heard during the public comment testimony period, which will, we will let you know when that happens. And Mr. Goddard, once you're up at the podium and ready to speak with that, then your time will begin. Could you repeat that? Once you're ready to speak, your time will begin.
Will you answer a question before you start the clock? May I ask you a question before you start?
Oh, yes, you may ask.
Yes, thank you. Question is, will you be swearing my witnesses in separately as they're giving evidentiary testimony in accordance with a legal provision that SEQUA requires?
Council informed me that we do not need to swear anybody in.
Thank you. Will you consider extending time for the witnesses to speak to five minutes instead of three?
No, three minutes, and we're going to leave it at three minutes.
Thank you.
Just let me know when you're ready so we can begin the clock.
They're going to set up some charts for you so you can see them?
I would like the attorney to review whatever charts or props you have before we present them.
He's seen them on the back of my submissions or their submissions in emails, but you're certainly welcome to look at.
I got the thumbs up that you may present them.
It's okay, you will see these better if they could stand them along here. Otherwise, it's very hard.
You know what?
If they actually get closer, I won't be able to see them.
It would be better if they're against, like against the chairs. That's about.
They'll be blocked by this.
Yeah.
Against the chairs is better for you?
Yeah, the dais cuts us off.
Because we can't see anything. The closer you get, the less we can see.
Who is your audience for this? Why don't I ask you that?
You are.
We are, okay, then you want to push it back that way. Are you going to point or reference as you speak, or is somebody going to help you do that?
I am, but I can probably do it from here. Don't have a pointer.
Just for clarification, we do have, we do have the public comment provided by email with item number three, the packet.
Okay, thank you, so.
You may want to see if there's anything that's not already included in the packet. I was unaware of the fact, not having previously had this, that the exhibits here are already photocopied and.
I see, they're already photocopied in here.
So I don't know if necessary.
Mr. Goddard, you provided the, a copy of the, of these exhibits to us via email?
These exhibits are attached to my responses to the city clerk that contain four pages of legal discussion. And then on the back, you have smaller pictures of these items right here that you're looking at, so you've seen them. The city attorney should have seen them.
Let me show you, we do have a lot of pictures in here. See that? These pictures?
That one?
Yes, we do have the photos in the public comment packets that we received, are these them as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'm assuming he wants to put them there so that anyone on television watching.
Yes, he can go on ahead and we have a copy of it here, in case you want to flip it around to the public, so the public can see. We do have the copies here.
There's really no, no easy way to do that.
Online, they thought.
And for those of viewing online, you can also go online and take a peek.
Sure, I'd rather you be able to see these though.
Our viewers online can go to the city's website, to the city and to the city council agenda under there, you'll find a category that says public comments, is that correct? And that way. You can see the public comments, there's a, there's a packet. And you will see it probably right in the middle. It is, well. Madam Clerk, can you reference which one it's from? You put the packet together.
On the city's website, if you go to where the public, the agendas for the meetings are published and go to the agenda for this meeting, March 5th, 2025. Item three, the public comments for this item are published as an attachment to item number three.
Thank you so much. For all that clarification. And when you're ready, Mr. Goddard, you can begin and we will begin the clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here for two reasons tonight, first, because there's a significant risk of flood in this community that's been downplayed for far too long. Second, because there's really no good way out of this community in the event of an emergency evacuation. And that too has been downplayed for far too long. I will present and my witnesses will support evidence and firsthand evidence of these propositions, particularly as they. Refer to the Liberty 1500 unit housing development approved by the planning commission to be built in a flood zone alongside the river. Let's take a quick walk through the legal issues, there's a couple of them, they're hard to understand, so I've tried to find a way to make it simple. There are two underlying laws being violated with respect to this development, both are regulations under the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA as it relates to environmental impacts. Impact reports called EIRs. My first goal is recirculation. The SEQA section governing this is 15088.5, it's called re-circulation. It isn't hard when a draft environmental import impact report. Is followed by a final environment, environmental impact report and they don't agree, and in this case, seven years later in the Liberty Development. And the two don't agree, this law mandates that the final EIR be recirculated again for 45 days so the community can see and ask questions about the differences between these two documents. The city attorney and the developer are trying to say that the draft EIR and the final EIR. Don't disagree, they're the same. That isn't correct, I'll demonstrate why and why is somewhat like swallowing a porcupine backwards to prove that. It is clearly not true. I call this the fish, the bird and the duck. In this case, the 2016 fish, the 2017 bird and the 2024 duck. The fish, the fish is the general plan EIR done in 2016. In that one, the fish looked up from underwater and said, yep, the flood risk here is significant and unavoidable for any further development in Southport, love, love. The bird is the Liberty project draft EIR done in 2017. The near sighted bird flew over the project a year after the fish talk and said. Looks good to me, the flood risk is less than significant with mitigation. He tweeted this good news out at the only workshop involved in Liberty project, a late in the game planning commission meeting, which is not a public workshop. And he flew on chirping complacently, the duck, the duck is the Liberty Development final EIR done in 2024. That's when an honest duck floated in seven years later, right in the middle of the beautiful new multimillion dollar setback levy full of water. While flying in, the duck noticed the beautiful levy only improved a small part of the 50 miles of the surrounding weak levees without even 100 and the. Or the required 200 year FEMA safety certification. The honest duck had to admit the truth and said the flood risk is significant and unavoidable from where I'm swimming. But they'll probably just adopt a statement of overriding concern and build anyway. If it wasn't so dangerous, said the duck, that kind of thinking would make me quack up. My position on the law, the bird and the duck say two totally different things. People depended on the bird's statement that the flood risk was not significant, that's not true. You've got to tell them what the duck said, the flood risk is significant and unavoidable, so recirculate the truth, let the public know the full risk and then see if the development should still be approved. The developers and the city's position on the law is, hey, wait, don't forget about the fish. That's the 2016 amended general plan. The fish called foul and it was right to begin with, even though the bird said something entirely different, we should listen to the fish. Forget about what the bird said, let's just figure out a way to call the bird and the duck the same thing. Why didn't the 2017 insignificant flood risk bird see the 2016 significant unavoidable flood risk fish when the draft Liberty EIR was done a year later? The general plan amendment fish had been swimming around out there for a year, I don't know the answer to that. But let me take a stab. I speculate that the bird did indeed see the fish, but did not want to hear it because it would not have gotten the project off the ground to initially declare it was dead in the water. Due to the significant unavoidable flood risk. Now, there's a lot of law behind all of that, if you consumed any of it, it's A, B and C. And the draft EIR in this matter doesn't match the final EIR, there's two entirely different, almost reversed flood risks assessments. Try to bootstrap backwards, I call it reverse bootstrapping or maybe boot unstrapping to say that the. 2016 general plan was pretty good and pretty accurate about significant flood risk and so we should look at that. Instead of the 2017 draft ER, EIR and say that 2016 general plan amendment matches the later. Final EIR in 2024, we'll call that good, it isn't good. The draft has to match the final, there's a significant difference in them, you must recirculate, there is no unclarity in that law, despite the fact you're going to hear, a lot of people try to make it unclarity. Including calling the bird's position a typo. No, it's not a typo, it's clearly a different risk assessment. The spurious argument here would overlook what the Liberty draft EIR said because the general plan agreed with the final EIR. It's, it's not going to fly, no matter how you cut that. SEQA section 15162 is my other thrust and that's a second legal argument, it demands a supplemental or entirely new ER. When new or more significant flood and emergency impacts exist now than were anticipated or studied seven years ago. We have annual flood reports that are West Sacramento or West Africa, we call it, that basically tell us, as they tell the Central Valley Flood Board. That we're, we're getting on ever thinner ice, but as far as emergency evacuation studies, none was ever done for this project. Or any other that I can find. My longtime resident witnesses will testify with fair arguments in abundance. Over what their eyes have seen and what they have personally experienced regarding this section of the law. Were substantial changes with respect to the circumstances under which this project is now be under, is undertaken, have come to pass. Particularly in the areas of flood risk and emergency evacuation impossibilities. You've chronicled millions and millions of dollars and how we spend it to improve these levees and there's not, no doubt, there's been improvement in areas of the levy. The developer and the city though, are trying to argue that the entire 50 miles of levy is better than it was. That's impossible. They allege that I have no evidence to the contrary. In law, courts take judicial notice of common sense and here's some. During the time that I just spoke, there was erosion among the levees as when water moving fast meets dirt, there's erosion. It's going, it's getting worse over time, not better, certainly we rebuild portions of it, we shore it up. But in other areas, not the setback levy, it's a beauty, but just on either side of it, we don't have that. Flood protection or behind us, we don't have that flood protection either. There are, I'll show you numerous places in the levy. Where we've got all sorts of issues, where there's seepage, where there's potential overtopping, where there's boils. You know this, we've been working on these levees ever since I've been here, they're 100 years old. They were made by farmers with tractors pushing dirt up. And they never had any quality standards and they never will, and subsequent to that, we've been dumping dirt on them, putting rock around them, pressing them, trying to make them work. And give us the safety that we need into which we are about to put 8,000 more units. This chart to my left shows you all the developments that are approved or pending in the Southport bathtub. Liberty Development is 1500 of those units, 3,000 were approved recently in the Arbor Development. Next comes the River Park with 2,700 more units right alongside Liberty and right there where the setback levy is. But I ask, I would say to the people in the Liberty and future River Park development, turn around and look at the levy behind you. The deep water channel, close to where I live. Has a lot of issues, let me show you some. Just a quick lot, walk along the deep water channel on the east side. Close to Bridgeway Island, we'll see these two spots where the rings are, here's the pictures of those two spots. These are levees that are collapsing because they're made of clay, they're made of loose dirt and you can't really shore them up well. That's not the only place we'll find this, we've got a beautiful setback levy, but what does that do other than provide complacency to the people who want to build beneath it and give you license to say, hmm, looks good. It's not good. We don't have and won't get 200 year FEMA protection certification. I don't know if it'll be in my lifetime or yours. But here's what your own EIR says in the Liberty final EIR, listen carefully to this, this is your, this is your EIR. A levy failure anywhere in the Southport Basin would likely inundate the entire basin, according to the US Army Corps of Engineers. The generally flat topography of West Sacramento, south of the deep water channel and the substantial flood. Deaths predict, predicted for a levy failure suggests that floodwater could spread extensively into the Liberty Development. Area even, even if the Southport levy, setback levy were to remain intact. It will be years until flood protection, our flood protection goals achieved. And in the meantime, new developments in the city of West Sacramento that occur prior to the completion of the improvements to ensure full protection. May have 100 year protection. Or less, we don't know, nobody's ever certified what year protection, different areas of the levy had, there's never been that kind of a certification. Therefore, the impact is significant and unavoidable until West Sacramento Levy Improvement Plan is complete and the required flood protection for the development protected by the levy system is obtained. When will the 200 year mandatory SB5 FEMA flood protection goal occur? How will it occur and what are we doing in the meantime? As we put 8,000 more units in a floodplain bathtub. And that brings me to the flood. Portion of my presentation. Put your seatbelts on a little, I'll try to be kind, but it gets a little rough, this I call the flood game busted, there's a game here. After a statement like what I just read, how is it possible that we can in our minds? Be comfortable with 8,000 more units in that bathtub. This is what all developments look like together on the map. Cassandra Noriega Deputy Executive Officer, Delta Stewardship Council and Hydrology says. A significant break anywhere in the 50 mile, 50 miles of levy around West Sacramento would inundate. With up to 20 feet of water throughout the community within two hours. I'm going to come back to that in emergency evacuation. But that's an independent statement, as is the one in the levy or in the Liberty final EIR, that's your own. Your own summary of the flood risk. Independent engineers who have surveyed West Sacramento levees have parroted this same statement of anywhere in the levy breaks, two hours, 20 feet of water, there's a significant break. On one side, it's going to flood the rest. Little awkward trying to show you these, but. This chart on my right, in my right hand, your left side, shows. The blue areas where we have significant levy issues that are not resolved, that don't even have 50 year protection. And yet, we have green areas where we've shored up the levees and they look pretty darn good and that's where you want to put the developments because that when like the people there have seemed complacently safe and the developers. Will use that to justify putting the developments there. The chart in my left hand. Shows the degree of inundation of this city. At different floodplain levels, the one you're wanting to get 200 year floodplain right here, it only happens flood once in 200 years, that's good. That's what you're striving for, here's what happens if it happens in 100 years, here's what happens in 50 years. And here is a 25 year floodplain, that's a significant chance and the same overall flooding because of the low area. Is, is, it's not as deep, but it's certainly there, here's a 10 year floodplain. These charts. Show you that conjecture about the flood. And levy certification levels are just that, there's conjecture. And we don't have anything that you could sell to people if you were selling houses to say, you're safe, you're good to go. Everything's fine here. And yet, we engage in that legal fiction, why? Because we have a special law just for West Sacramento. That allows us all the way to 2025 to keep trying. And if we keep trying in each year, our local flood board. Shows findings that one, we have enough money this year to keep going, make the plan, we got a plan, we're going to keep at it. We've got the money for that year, if you keep saying that every year, our small flood board composed of three people using this SB586 law. If you make those findings and show significant progress, you can keep building. Whereas otherwise SB5 would make a building moratorium out of this place, you wouldn't be building anything. But we somehow got that law just for us, why just for us, why doesn't anybody else have that, that might tell you something about the problems with our levy. And yet, we keep laying down huge developments. The flood board is composed of three people. Tom Ramos, an out of town developer, council persons Alcala and Sulpicio Hall. It takes two out of three of those to say, yes, we find adequate progress and we're going to go ahead and build. And as long as we keep saying it, we can keep going ahead and build. However, our most recent report from Saffka to the Central Valley Flood Board tells us in the report. That it'll take 1.2 trillion dollars, that's 80 million a year for the next 15 years. To even get near 200 year flood protection, we don't have that kind of money, I doubt you're ever going to get it. I think this is a game, I think we keep extending that so that we can keep building and, and that's just. Unconscionable behavior. People are going to move in here and think they're safe and you've given it in the Liberty EIR to the developer to tell people the risks. So because it's significant and unavoidable and we've adopted a statement of overriding concern, which just means we're going to build anyway. We're going to put it in their deeds or have the developer tell them, hey, this is a flood zone, beware. It's buyer beware, and if you can't get flood insurance, don't blame it on us. That brings me to emergency evacuation. But I'll leave that subject saying this, if that doesn't sound like a flood game. Then you really need to stop and look back on that and ask yourself, who's on that flood board? And who's on the Reclamation District 900? Board that governs all of our waterways and our ditches and arranges for developments to occur, well, that's Dan Ramos, Tom Ramos's brother, another out of town developer. Does that not just make you a little bit queasy? It should. I don't know who appoints them, I don't want to ask, but I'm going to guess. Emergency evacuation, the non-plan. My researchers, searchers and I have looked everywhere to understand what the city plan is. We have a 64 page 2016 emergency non-plan, I call it, because I still don't have a clue after reading every word of it. How I would get out of the community, that's because there's no route plans, we don't have a traffic study. Except 2016, same date as the emergency plan. Our emergency plan and traffic study are both about the same age as the EIR in the Liberty Development. You'll likely do the usual tonight and stand up the fire chief, the police chief, good men, and have them tell us as usual that we're working on it and we got it under control. And the police chief will say he's got the authority to evacuate, evacuate everyone and he certainly does, as obvious as, and unhelpful as that is. The fire chief will say, we have a plan, we're going to keep working on it, we're trained and prepared, we're going to get it done, but there's no routes out of here. So that leaves me wondering, and anybody else who read that plan, what am I supposed to do? And this is what we're supposed to do according to your plan, as each emergency presents its own specific challenges, we cannot have a generic route plan, instead. We create the route plan to accommodate the challenge during the incident. And to best manage the flow of vehicles and people as deemed appropriate. With that, we're working on a plan. During the incident, we're going to find out what 55,000 people and 40 to 60,000 cars ought to do. I can tell you what they're going to do and perhaps the reason you don't want to put that in a plan is become painfully obvious, obvious what everybody knows by common sense. If you had a quarter of those cars trying to get to Jefferson Boulevard. Or our beautiful new Valley Parkway, they're all going to jam up in an instant, and if there's a flood and it's over the top of your car, you've got dead people. This is unconscionable, we've got five exits. We've got five exits out of this community. We have one to Clark'sburg. We've got four that come to the same place generally on I-80. Everybody's going to rush for those. I don't know what other people are going to do, but I'm not going to say, "Honey, where's the evacuation plan that we're supposed to receive? The car's almost underwater." And we're supposed to get some notification of how to get out of here. Here's the infrastructure route problem. It's pretty simple. It's just not enough exits. Each one of these is an exit from this community. It shows the choke points, the traffic issues, the traffic jams at 8:00 AM in the morning. All the greens or the orange zones show that you're almost at gridlock just trying to get out of here to go to work. Those are the exits. There's no other way out of here. We never built the I-5 Bridge over the river. We should have. That would have solved these problems and we could have done some better things by virtue of development. Right now, though, we're placing all of these people in jeopardy. 1,500 more homes are being added to the 3,000 approved last November. We're continuing to push these houses and put them down as fast as we can for obvious other reasons that have to do with CCOG and arena numbers, but that doesn't protect the public. This is why the Liberty Development is vulnerable, both to recirculation for inconsistent EIRs and requires supplemental or new EIR based on significantly increased impacts of flood and emergency evacuation, which have not been assessed. Thank you.
No clapping, please. There's no clapping. Please, no clapping, or I will take the comment period back down. We need this time to keep moving. Next, the applicant. I think you have Mr. Terry Teepol or who will be speaking? All right. Please state your name. On behalf of Liberty, you will be given 15 minutes to respond. No testimony or witnesses will be heard at this time. All public comment testimony will be heard during public comment testimony. Which is the next item?
Certainly, thank you. My name is Kevin. Good evening, Mayor Guerrero and members. My name is Kevin Kemper, and I am the Land use Attorney representing Liberty and speaking to you on the Liberty team. All right, is this any better?
That's better, thank you.
All right. So...
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Before you go, can we take the prop down, please? Can we move all the props to the side, as a matter of fact? This is not your prop, right?
No.
There you go. Thank you, City Manager.
Oh, this is clever. All right, awesome.
Thank you.
Again. My name is Kevin Kemper, and I am the Land use Attorney here representing the Liberty team. And I definitely do not need 15 minutes. I didn't come up with a crafty parable in order to break down my arguments. I'd like to keep it simple, and I think the reason why is because I've had a chance, our team has had a chance to look at the staff report. It's been prepared by Bob Lagermacino and Justin Hardy and Jeff Mitchell and many others on the city's team. And it's an excellent piece of work, and it really summarizes all of the issues. And so, to a great extent, I don't feel like I need to duplicate my testimony to you tonight what's been said in that document. But I would like to address a number of the legal issues that have been raised by Goddard. The first of these is recirculation. The criteria for recirculation under Secret Guidelines 15088.5 is well described in the staff report and elsewhere, but the passage of time alone between the circulation and the draft EIR and the preparation of the final EIR and ultimately a decision by the Planning Commission to certify it, the passage of time between those milestone events is really irrelevant under SEQA. It has a certain facial appeal. You think, well, life moves on, the environment moves on, city staff moves on, you know, everything's changed. But the reality is that the project hasn't changed. The circumstances under which the project is being undertaken have not changed, and new information showing a significant impact that was not previously disclosed has not been made. The draft EIR describes accurately the flood control risk associated with the project in particular and development in the Southport area in general, and there's been no change to that. The final EIR recognizes that the way that that impact is characterized versus the way it's described, you know, as a factual matter, changed to be consistent with the city's general plan. I beg to argue that if that change hadn't been made, Mr. Goddard would be here arguing that the city has minimized the characterization of the flood impact by characterizing it as less than significant somehow when the general plan EIR has come to a contrary conclusion. So there's no new information here. There really isn't. Mr. Goddard raised many arguments about fair argument and suggests that the documents that he's provided in his testimony constitute some kind of a fair argument. That's a late argument. In SEQA, when you're talking about whether the fair argument rule applies, you're talking about what applies at the city's determination to prepare an EIR on one hand or a negative declaration on the other. And that decision was made in 2016 roughly, for that, actually. And so, the fair argument rule doesn't have any application to this. What we're dealing with at this stage, given that the Planning Commission certified the EIR on January 30th, is the substantial evidence rule. What is that? It means that the Planning Commission's decision can be upheld if it is based on substantial evidence in the record. And that substantial evidence is described in the findings adopted by the Planning Commission. Mr. Goddard is entitled to his opinions. He's entitled to his arguments. He's entitled to his exhibits and his internet downloads and his conjectures and all of the rest. But what he's not entitled to are his own facts or the ability to supplant what the EIR has described on these substantive issues with the information that he has provided you tonight. I would tell you that Mr. Goddard didn't comment on the draft EIR, and he doesn't stand here in front of you as a representative of a community group. He filed the appeal on his own behalf and is pursuing it in that manner. And it's kind of late to the party. You know, I recognize that there are residents in the city that agree with his position on things, and I respect that, and they're going to talk to you tonight about that. And that's respectable. Again, they're entitled to have their views heard. They're entitled to have their views respected. They're not entitled to have their views adopted. And so, in contrast, I would request that the city council deny the appeal and adopt the decision of the city council. You know, on the issue of hazards, there's, the city has gone to great lengths to continually update its hazard and evacuation plan. The draft EIR describes what the situation is related to flood risk and, in fact, other forms of risk as well, and nothing's changed. Of course, as Fire Chief Bins describes, an evacuation plan is always going to be an iterative process. It's always going to account for changes and things along the way. It's going to account for an incident over here in this part of the city versus an incident over here in this part of the city or somewhere in between. And there's not going to be any set rules, some hard and fast rule where somebody, you know, as he mockingly described, somebody looks at the evacuation plan that's given to them, "Oh, well, that's what we do. Got to adapt the circumstances." And that's what the city's efforts reflect. And I hope staff can talk about that in a little bit more detail. Look, it is just not the case that flood control and flood safety has declined in the last 10 years since the draft EIR has been served. A couple of the council members sit on the Wasafa Board and are involved with RD 900. Is that a conspiracy? No. It just might make you really educated on the flood issues that pertain to West Sacramento, sitting in both of those capacities. We've been involved in this project for well over a decade, Terry Teepol and I. We've been through various council members, various mayors, and I can say to a person that five of you born out and your predecessors have had nothing in mind other than the well-being of the city of West Sacramento and the safety of its residents. That's why this project has taken so long to get through the process. It isn't because it was shotgunned through with a minimum of hearing and public review. No. Staff and the city's elected officials have done a fantastic job of vetting this project, analyzing it, negotiating a development agreement with the project team that takes care of the city's needs, one of which significantly is funding for flood control measures. Yeah, I mean, it's all part of the whole puzzle here. It all needs to happen. You know, Mr. Goddard was pretty candid about the terms of the Yarborough Settlement Agreement. I haven't had a chance to review it. He said he posted it. I am curious about it. I spoke with him today, and I asked him the pointed question. I said, "Mr. Goddard, all your arguments regarding flood control and your maps and exhibits and such, can't say I agree with the analysis of the conclusions, but honestly, what is your real reason for bringing this appeal?" And he kind of stepped back, and he didn't really want to answer the question, and I think he thought it was an impudent question. And eventually, he said, "Well, I'm not going to tell you why I'm filing this appeal. I wouldn't tell you that." Well, he said he's here for two different reasons: flood control and hazards. And he's here, I suppose, to spearhead some effort, but I think we found out tonight that he's actually here for 100,002 reasons. Because, look, this is late to the party. I don't believe his arguments are made in good faith. Obviously, there's folks that disagree, but that's the fact of the matter. And he said so himself. So, members of the council, I urge you to adopt the Planning Commission's certification of the EIR and approval of the tentative map, to adopt the recommendations in the staff report, to adopt the findings that are in the staff report, and to, at the earliest possible opportunity, bring this project to a public hearing on the remaining title. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will ask that our police chief, we are having many disruptions and commentary to the speakers. Any additional disruptions, I will have the chief escort you out, please, because that is inappropriate to have that. I would like to have quiet when we have somebody presenting, to be respectful to the speaker. Even though you disagree, there may be disagreement. We have staff who will be speaking that you may disagree, and I, especially when staff speak, police chief will be escorting you out if there is a verbal disagreement, the way that was just made, to our last speaker. Madam Clerk, are you ready for the public comment at this time? Now we will have public comment, members of the public and/or individuals in support of either the appellant or the applicant. Will be given the opportunity to present testimony. Public comment will be limited to three minutes, and if the three minutes are up, the clerk will turn off the mic and you will not be heard in the, or will not be recorded. So I would like for you to stay within the 30, three minutes. Madam Clerk?
Julie Tankersley. If you can pronounce your name correctly, please.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Julie Tankersley, and I am here to support the Goddard Appeal of the Liberty Development. I've been a resident of West Sacramento for the last 20 years, and I live between Linden Road and Lake Washington Road. When we purchased our home in 2005, we were assured that a bridge to Sacramento would be constructed. However, now, two decades later, there is still no bridge and no significant infrastructure improvements despite our increase in population. My main concern is the flood risk and emergency evacuation with our increased population. Upon reviewing the city's website, I was unable to locate a comprehensive flood management, emergency, and evacuation plan as required by the draft EIR. The city does not appear to be in compliance with the draft EIR requirements as there is no publicly accessible formal plan outlining the procedures for evacuating tens of thousands of residents. It is also, I'm sorry, it is essential to develop and disseminate these plans before an emergency occurs. Although Yolo County does have an emergency operation plan available online, it specifies that the evacuations are to be managed by the local jurisdiction. I am concerned about the city of West Sacramento's preparedness and capability to effectively evacuate thousands of residents in the event of flooding or other catastrophic events. As we all know, West Sacramento faces heavy traffic congestion, especially during peak hours, primarily due to the commuters. This traffic congestion accounts for only a small number of residents and does not include non-commuters such as remote workers, retirees, individuals with disabilities, and the elderly. The growing traffic congestion is promoting my concern regarding the viability of an efficient evacuation plan for the residents. California has faced numerous catastrophes in recent years, highlighting its necessity for preparing potential disasters in advance. The floods and fires that much of our state has seen demonstrates that these threats are real and can occur anywhere. It is crucial for the city to develop and implement planned emergency responses and evacuation plans before adding more homes. Given our current infrastructure, evacuating the existing population will be challenging, if not impossible. Adding more residents without property planning will increase risks and complications during emergencies. I respectfully request that the Goddard Appeal should be granted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah McKibben? Ms. McKibben, if you need somebody to shuffle those, I don't want you to lose your time from speaking with your three minutes. If you need somebody to shuffle those, maybe you can have somebody help you so you don't lose your time just walking over and moving them. You know what I mean?
Give me one second. Yeah. Sorry, very nervous. Okay. So, my name is Sarah McKibben, and me and my family have lived in the Southport area since 2012. I am also here in support of the Goddard Appeal for the Liberty Development. I'm frankly appalled at the continued approval of Liberty as well as several other large developments for a total of over 8,000 new homes in the Southport area alone. These are being pushed forward without updated or comprehensive evaluations of increases in traffic congestion and how that would compromise emergency egress from the South Basin. Oh, no. The traffic impact evaluations for the Liberty EIR were conducted over seven years ago and doesn't consider any of the other big developments waiting in the wings, many of which had even more outdated traffic impact evaluations. Even at current population levels, there's significant constriction points along morning routes, which are basically the same egress or evacuation routes. So it's definitely worse around River City High, River City High School and the freeway So I also just live west of the Liberty Development, and there's countless mornings where I have to wait an extra 10 to 15 minutes to get on the freeways. This is nothing, I understand, compared to traffic seen other where, other places, but I can't even imagine what that would look like from the additional cars from 8,000 new homes, let alone trying to evacuate all of the South Basin. Especially if you were to extrapolate traffic like this until all of the evacuation. I'm also concerned about local flooding and how it would impact evacuation. These pictures, or this picture, is from my road, Harmon Road, that flooding that occurs with pretty much every rain event. Localized flooding like this would slow evacuation or make it impossible. This is also the road that... The Liberty Development, people trying to access Jefferson Road to, you know, commute or evacuate would likely be traveling down Harmon Road, which is a two-way road, and then with flooding like that during an evacuation. And then with flooding like that during an evacuation, it would just make it impassable potentially to Jefferson Boulevard. Lastly, I'm concerned about Sacramento being, West Sacramento being rezoned as a special flood hazard area. FEMA is updating their flood insurance rate maps, and West Sacramento is the only one left. If the city hasn't achieved the 200-year flood protection or levy protection by the time these maps are done, all residents will have to be, carry flood insurance, and all new homes and renovations will have to be flood-proofed and elevated. I recently contacted my insurance and got a quote for $2,300 just even now. So, these are the kinds of thoughts that I think about.
Thank you. Kevin Kemper. Never mind.
Oh, Mr. Kemper? Okay, thank you.
Gay Reinhardt. You know, I just, can you lower the button down? It's just so hard for people. That's better.
No, it's okay. I made it right. My name is Gay Reinhardt. I'm 83 years old. My husband and I are longtime active residents of West Sacramento, both having lived here close to 80 years. My husband is a retired division chief of the West Sacramento Fire Department. We have been, seen, and been involved in a lot of changes in our community. Tonight, I am here, along with all of you, to discuss the Liberty Development, where on January 30th, 2025, the mayor's planning commission approved 1,500 more housing units in a well-documented flood zone along the Sacramento River. Oh, and with no regard for the lack of current emergency exits and with none in the planned future. You know that our levees are not safe, that they still do not qualify for the required 100- and 200-year flood protection report. It is public knowledge that even today, a significant levee break anywhere in the 50 miles of levees surrounding West Sacramento would result in up to 20 feet of water in two hours. Why does this not concern our public representatives? How do you justify decisions like this? I would like to share an experience that I had in February of the year 1986. It had rained for 10 straight days. I live in the Southport area off of Davis Road, and I saw that everything around me was overrun with water. The river was about to come over or break through the levee. In fact, there were water boils at the end of Davis Road. And my husband was out of town. It was just me and my three children. I packed two ice chests, one with food, one with clothes. I put them in my boat, and I hopes that maybe I could get out of there. I called my parents in San Jose to tell them that if we died, we loved them, because there was no way of me making it out of West Sacramento on the roads. That was 39 years ago, and we are still in the same position, only now exacerbated, as now our population and cars far exceed anything we had in 1986. And you were wanting to add more, and yet we still have only one exit to the south and four roads to the north, which all still converge into only one exit. Our elected officials are not willing to accept the fact that we live in a known flood area where nothing has been done to improve our exit capabilities. They have only ignored the truth and are willing to put more lives in danger. The real question here is, why? Could it be politics? Could we be trading health and safety for developer profits? I would hope that this time, you might truly take all of these things into consideration and do the job that we elected and trusted you to do in our behalf. That is why I think that the Goddard appeal should be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Scott Wagner.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I thank you for the time to speak tonight. My name is Scott Wagner, and I've lived in West Sacramento since 1992. I have almost 10 years of experience in emergency management and been a volunteer disaster worker specializing in evacuations behind a fire line. In California, disasters come in many forms: wildfires, floods, earthquakes, civil unrest, and so on. In our community, I have a serious concern for the potential of flooding, as noted in the information presented here tonight. I have working knowledge of CDAA, which is a California Disaster Act, and FEMA policy under the Stafford Act that dictates policy and eligibility for damages incurred during state or federally declared disaster. So, I have some concerns that in this community, God forbid if we had a situation such as that, and FEMA came back and found that there were compliance issues, that we would not be funded for that disaster, that potential is out there. Okay, I'm here tonight to express my utmost concern regarding the lack of planning and inadequate infrastructure needed for a safe and orderly evacuation in the face of a large-scale flood. Here in West Sacramento, we are surrounded by levees that leave us with few options for building the necessary infrastructure needed for a safe and orderly evacuation for our citizens. On any given workday, we already lack the infrastructure for timely exits out of the city as it is in the morning, let alone what would occur under a mass evacuation order. With a failed bridge project, we now have very limited options under a mass evacuation order with a failed bridge, with that, sorry, we have very limited options to expand on an already inadequate amount of ingress/egress routes for our existing population. That's where we're existing, where we are now. Again, let alone for adding the proposed large-scale Liberty Development Plan without first making sure we have the proper infrastructure that would allow a safe and orderly evacuation. See, I know all too well what an emergency evacuation entails. I worked the Oroville Dam evacuation, where there were miles of traffic that caused chaotic congestion, instances of panic and flared tempers. By the grace of God, the dam held, and we had an example to learn from. I worked the Campfire, where 87 people lost their life as a result of an outdated and inadequate evacuation plan. I was there during the disaster and aftermath, during the cleanup, where there were hundreds of abandoned cars, where people had to flee them in the face of that disaster because of that inadequate plan. They didn't know which way to get out, and the traffic was blocked, and many of those...
Mr. Wagner, can you please wrap it up? Your three minutes are up. Thank you. Erin Whitzel.
Good evening. My name is Erin Whitzel, and I'm a 36-year resident of West Sacramento. I'm here in support of the Goddard Appeal of the Liberty Development. I have little confidence currently that our 100-year-old levees can keep us safe from flooding in the Southport area. We have too few outlets. The plan to add 8,000 more housing units and approximately 15,000 more cars increases our risks. In 1992, when I first moved to Southport, Jefferson Boulevard was a two-lane road with a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Linden and Jefferson. There were access issues back then, traveling to and from Southport. A traffic accident or any roadblock for any reason meant there was literally no access out from either direction, except to go down to Freeport. However, I never felt insecure about getting out of the area and to a freeway outlet in the event of any type of an emergency. We didn't have the number of cars on the road with only 30,000 residents to warrant my concern. Maybe I was naive, maybe I wasn't. Today, however, with over 55,000 residents, I have zero confidence of the ability of anyone in Southport to get out in a significant flood or other catastrophic event. We have far too many residents and cars relative to the few hard to get to freeway onramps. Also, that planned bridge from Southport to I-5 has not materialized and likely never will. I recently tried to find my evacuation routes on the city's website, but all I could really figure out was the zone I'm in. That wasn't really hard, I know where I live. What I don't know and couldn't figure out from the city's emergency plan is, in the event of a catastrophe, where is my route I'm supposed to use to get out of here? An emergency plan with no route is not a plan, it's just talk. So, it got me thinking, my only route begins on Linden to get to Jefferson. It's likely in a panic, most of us south of the Deepwater Channel in many neighborhoods will end up on Jefferson. With no emergency plan, I'm thinking no one knows how many cars that might be. Further, many of us heading to Jefferson to go one way or the other might not even be able to get on Jefferson because of the gridlock. What happens then? We all sit on side streets, and whatever comes, what may? With the increased gridlock in Southport over the last 10 years or so, it's irresponsible to not have a current traffic study and a real emergency plan. Frankly, we have too many residents on the south side already for our existing access to outlets. Another several thousand homes with several thousand vehicles trying to get out is just insane. Y'all can't provide us with any security that we are currently safe, let alone being safe with the addition of more housing and thousands of more people and cars. You can't provide us with 100- or a 200-year FEMA flood certification likely for decades to come and maybe billions to billions of dollars that we don't have. You can't expect the citizens of West Sacramento to believe we are safe by having the fire and police chief tell us that they have it under control, that we don't have designated routes and sufficient outlets to get out of here. We shouldn't have to face this possibility, because this council and city manager are so pro-development, citizens' lives could be at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitzel. Bob Shabert.
Madam Mayor, the council members?
You can raise it up.
I will do that. I'm here tonight in support of Mr. Goddard's appeal. We can talk about law all night, but something we should discuss is common sense. I guess we didn't learn about that in law school. I came over in the early 70s when I joined the sheriff's office. I worked the streets in the last nine, 1987. We handed the keys to West SacPD. I've watched our city grow. This is not our master plan that we had back in the 80s for West Sacramento. I live out of Bridgeway Lakes, and I'm with a law firm in Old SAC. It takes me, oh, 18 to 20 minutes if I don't go during traffic time to get to Old SAC from Bridgeway Lakes. During traffic time, it's 25 to 35 minutes. We have a major accident, which we've had a few, on Southport Parkway or Jefferson Boulevard. Takes 45 minutes to 50 minutes to get to Old SAC, because generally, we have all of our police units tied up, sergeant and all four units, which takes me back to 1987, where we're the sheriff's office. We had a sergeant, three units, one or two reserve deputies, and two CHP units. Fast forward today, 55,000 people, about the same. I hope nobody ever has to experience a panic of citizens trying to leave a community. It's something we don't want to experience. We don't have the law enforcement or the fire personnel to handle that. If you look at West Sacramento, we're an island surrounded by water, and what's worse is we're like an hourglass. All the roads come down to a point. Bridgeway Lakes, if I had to escape quickly to the south, I'll take the River Road, but I guess I'll be sharing with about 55,000 other people the same idea. And then, of course, if somebody wanted to litigate it afterwards and say, gee, we had inadequate police and fire, yeah, we'll just, what the heck? We'll hide behind Government Code 6845, since we have no liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shabert. Thomas McDuffie. Oh, Ms. McD...
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm baffled, bewildered, I don't know what to say. I'm probably just gonna ramble, but I'll mention a few things. In this document that I've been looking at here, I put a lot of faith into words. I want to believe the words that I read, but when I see something that appears to be partly ambiguous or unilaterally slanted one way or the other, I get confused on it. But anyway, Liberty Island proposes roads that are not going to come out on a public road. It doesn't tell me here that Davis Road is going to have a buffer, as prescribed in your resolutions, and if they're going to put a road through over what I consider to be a non-public road, Davis Road, then you've breached that buffer, and that's going to make it more difficult for the people who live in the residential rural zonings. History-wise, if I had time, I would go back and share with you how all of this happened, and we've been a flood zone for, since the 1900s, when it was originally purchased by the West Sacramento investors. And when I read something, for instance, says easements of record no longer required to serve a subdivision shall be abandoned prior to the concurrent with the first phased final map, that doesn't make sense to me. Where would easements be? What are you talking about when it's easements? Are you talking about drainage ditches that you may want to cover up or something? The picture she showed you here on Harmon Road, that water didn't stand like that until they covered the ditch up at Harmon Road to put that other development in. Now, they've taken several other ditches away. The water is building up the ditches, building pressure, trying to get out, because it can't set for long, and you're blasting out ditches like Blacker. It's eroding, because there's too much pressure being forced down that ditch, rather than the water sitting, waiting its turn to get out. But what do I know? City engineer shall determine the need for de-watering prior to issuance of grading permits, and de-watering shall comply with Section 22. I don't see in here anywhere what it speaks of the city or the developer or anybody standing responsible for our domestic wells. If de-watering takes them down to where they're not sufficiently operating, who is going to take care of that? Who's going to pay for that? I'll tell you, the EIR, I want to say, okay, fine, ER hasn't changed, nothing's changed, but the verbiage that I recall, it says, "No homes could be built until a 200-year flood plane." Now, amen.
Denise Duncan.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Denise Duncan. My husband is a fourth-generation member of this community, and I've been here for almost 45 years. Back in 1988, Quality Urbanization and Development was formed to address problems within our community. I was one of the founders. I see no significant changes from then until now, and our population keeps growing and growing and growing. I have been blessed to be able to be here tonight. Back in 2013, I suffered a catastrophic stroke. Play it forward to today. Two years ago, I was put on a ventilator because of the pneumonia and the flu that was going around. This is not about me. This is about the accessibility of moving from this city into Sacramento to where there was medical treatment. An ambulance can't roll over other cars. My concern is, from a humanistic point of view, I have lived catastrophe, and by the grace of God, I am here talking to you. I don't take this lightly. I don't like being up here, but I feel that it's important for you to realize that the EIRs that are outdated, I've got grandchildren, nine of them, that I would like to see being able to grow up in this community, being able to be a productive citizen, and with your projected build-out, which we saw clear back in 1988 and beyond, back through there. which we saw clear back in 1988 and beyond, back through there. I want my grandchildren, as well as everybody else's families, to be able to go ahead and live in a safe community. I want to know that if I suffer health issues, which unfortunately I've been through, that I'm gonna be able to get out of this town and have the health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Duncan. Robin Davis.
I'm Robin, and I've lived on the north side of town for about four years, and I'm here today to respectfully ask that you grant the appeal and delay approval of this project until the environmental impact report is recirculated for public review. This is crucial so that the public can fully understand the risks related to flooding and emergency evacuation, issues that were not adequately addressed in the outdated seven-year-old EIR. Many of my neighbors have voiced concerns about the increased population in the area, particularly in relation to flood risks and emergency evacuation plans. While I feel fortunate that my home is on wheels and offers some flexibility in an emergency, I still worry about how I could safely move myself and it to higher ground. I've experienced firsthand the severe congestion between West Capitol and Merkley Avenue to get on the freeway, especially during peak hours, making evacuation even more challenging. The heart of my request is rooted in transparency and education. We need more opportunities for the public to understand these risks and have their voices heard. I've seen this council's commitment to public participation, transparency, and workshops, but I fear that the interests of developers are overshadowing the legitimate concerns of residents. While I fully support the need for housing, particularly affordable and smaller options, I believe developers should not have the power to dictate what, when, and how we build and the quality of our infrastructure. This is a sustainability issue, and at the moment, the developers' interests appear to be taking precedence over public health and safety. The 2024 final EIR clearly states that flood risks are significant and unavoidable, yet we are moving forward without recirculating this critical information to the public or holding a public workshop. Why is transparency being limited now? I urge you to consider and ensure that this project is thoroughly reviewed with full public input. The Goddard appeal should be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. We have no additional requests to speak. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All your assistance here. We will, at this time, move next to Mr. Goddard, the appellant. You will be given 10 minutes to respond, but you may not introduce new testimony or evidence or restate direct testimony. Sorry, Mr. Council, do you have a-
I think the guidelines you set up earlier was five minutes. I just wanted to-
Oh, five minutes.
The appellant?
Five minutes. You have five minutes. And if you want to lower the podium, do you need to bring your props back or any-
Note that we're giving the developer 10 minutes to do a rebuttal and a citizen 5 minutes. I also note that-
Oh, sorry, I was, what was the timing that we said?
They should be the same.
It was your discretion initially was, the times were set previously after discussion.
So was it 10 minutes or 5 minutes?
It's 5 minutes and 10 minutes for the appeal because you got an additional time during the presentation, because you got 20 minutes initially.
You got 20 minutes. So this time is 10 minutes or 5 minutes?
Time's 5.
This time it's 5.
It should be the same as the developer unless you want to favor the developer, but the point being, this is up to you.
The developers getting 5 minutes.
Sorry, excuse me. I mean to interrupt.
The developers getting 5 minutes.
I got you.
Is that right?
Well, that would be fair, wouldn't it?
That's what I'm doing.
5 and 5, good with you.
You get 10, he gets 5. Everyone gets 5. Everyone, you know.
5 and 5.
How about we both take 15?
No, sorry, you get 5, he gets 5. That's right.
Sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry if I confused you. I do understand that this is your discretion. These are staff suggestions, these time limits. This is your choice. This is your decision, and you don't have to agree with your staff. I know you want to, but it certainly needs to be fair, whatever you're gonna do. So either I got 5, developer has 5, or I got 10, developer has 10.
I think she said everybody gets 5. We're ready to start.
Everybody gets 5.
You good with that?
You may begin. The clock will be good right now.
Thank you, I'm good. Thank you very much. I would like to yield a minute of my time to a witness that you should, and I won't offer this in rebuttal, because you should have taken the time to hear him. Probably the smartest guy in this room who's doing this job, who can tell you something you might learn from, you cut him off of the kneecap immediately. I'd like to ask Scott to come up and take a minute and conclude what he was saying as part of my rebuttal, because it is really good to listen to.
Madam Clerk, please pause the clock. I have a question for our council. At this time, the appellant is only allowed and no new additional information. Is that correct?
That was the procedure that you set up, correct?
That is the procedure.
It's not new additional information. All right, moot point, and I'll continue and finish. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder, I noticed tonight, there is not one citizen here advocating for this project. Why is that? It's a real good question. It's a developer-driven project. It's a city-driven project. It's an effort by the city staff, the city manager, to continue to put down these developments and get out from under the arena numbers, but it's unsafe for the community. I think we've spoken in abundance. Why not, as a point that I haven't made before, hold the train? Do an emergency plan update with routes before you approve these developments? Why didn't we do that a long time ago, before we started putting this stuff down? I want to mention that I did, I did speak with the opposing council here this morning, and I just, I don't know. I'm appalled at how that all came out just now, but I want to, I want to say to these citizens who came down here and courageously stood up here and told you what they thought, gave you excellent facts, they researched, they worked, they participated, they did everything that a person could do in this community to take part in their city government, and I appreciate every one of them. I was impressed by what I heard. Fantastic, really well done. I hope you take into heart what they said. These are not props. I didn't pay them, I didn't force them, I didn't do any of that. Some of them I have never seen before. These are people, they represent probably 100, each one of them that isn't here, that feel like there's something really wrong here, and they want you to know it. They know it, they want you to say that you know it, they want to hear you tell the public that you know it, they want to bust the flood game, tell people what the risk really is, what the emergency evacuation issues really are. And if that much only is done tonight, this was a success. I think they did a great job in spelling it out. I would not call an opposing counsel and ask him for his strategy at the evening meeting. I have more respect and courtesy than to insult someone's intelligence by that. I think we hear a lot of vindictiveness for some reason. I mean it for the money, I'm a serial appellant. The developer's attorney is a serial representative of developers, and he gets paid a lot to do it. Is that worth anything that we have these kind of arguments? What's important here? Not assailing people's character. I haven't done that, and I don't. I'm here just to tell you that I've made it a goal to try to do this one thing as an old man, get, try to get the truth out here, let people decide what, what they think, and then ask the city government to pay attention, pay attention. This, this, this whole loop of, you know, developers contribute to campaigns, city council, push developments, I'm not saying you're doing that, it's, but it is a typical thing. The developer isn't giving you money because he loves you. He obviously wants to see you like his project and move it through, and that's what they do. And there's nothing seriously wrong with that. Developers have a right to make money. That's what they do. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm not trying to stop all the development in the world. This one here, though, and the ones in the Southport Basin, it's crazy stuff. It just really is. If you'd let Scott finish tonight, he would have told you how bad the mayor and Paradise felt, because she didn't work hard enough to get an evacuation plan in place, and it came home to roost. And long after you people are gone, and you will be, if that happens, and it does, I mean, we have disasters, look around, this isn't an anomaly, we're ripe, this is the place, it's the worst levees in California, from what I can tell. You're the decision-makers. He wanted to point that out to you. I'm gonna conclude with just a simple statement. No matter how loud Noah yelled, nobody cared until the rain came, and then it was too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Next, the appellant will be given 5 minutes to respond, but may not introduce new testimony or evidence or restate direct testimony. Mr. Kemper.
Thank you, Mayor Guerrero. Kevin Kemper again, on behalf of the applicant. A couple of things, as it relates to, again, flood control. Look, there's no disparagement of all the residents here that have come and shared their testimony and described their, their beliefs, their observations, their experiences as it relates to life in West Sacramento and flooding and driving and roadway conditions. That being said, these things are analyzed in the EIR. They've been presented, and honestly, the point of this hearing tonight is an appeal hearing on the decisions made by the planning commission with respect to the EIR on one hand and the tentative map the other. Your job as city council, sitting here, hearing an appeal, is to make a judgment based on substantial evidence as to whether the EIR is adequate as an informational document. The purpose of an EIR is not to advocate for a project, or for that matter, to advocate against it, it's simply to analyze the impacts in so many areas of the project as it's been proposed, and as well as to analyze the effect of cumulative development, which would include the large projects, Yarborough and River Park, as well as this generalized development in Southport. And that is the role of the council tonight. Did the planning commission make the right decision based on what was in front of it? That is actually a wholly different decision than whether you're in favor of the project, you know, on the whole. This will come back to council on a hearing on the development agreement, on the specific plan, which is really the backbone document of the project, and other entitlements as well. And I imagine that most of the folks that are here tonight are gonna be at that hearing, and I respect that. And they're, they're going to have their views about whether the council should approve this project or not, and they're entitled to those, and they're entitled to have the council listen to those, for sure. But tonight, the council's decision is really in the format of an appeal and whether the planning commission made the right choice when it certified the EIR and approved the map on January 30th. One point I'd like to address, and I won't remember the gentleman's name, but no disrespect from that, he had raised the issue of easements in the map and how a tentative map has language in it that it eliminates all existing easements within the property. That's standard language, that's standard procedure. It's not that drainage is being eliminated in the project, it's being relocated, and the project has very detailed plan for drainage and runoff and all of that, and the tentative map shows where the new easements are gonna be, which may not exactly duplicate some of the antiquated easements that have been on them. I just wanted to make that clear. And with that, I would certainly welcome any questions that any of you may have of myself or Perry Teepel, and that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you for your-
Thank you. This time, I will allow staff to provide responses to testimony received from the appellant, applicant, public, and they may be able to, council may be able to ask- This is our opportunity to ask all the staff, nobody go this time. So I will, I want to queue people up here just to prepare for flood protection, that's all, emergency evacuation.
Our Fire Marshal Brian Johnson is here.
Okay, thank you. And then, that's all.
Paul Dirksen is here on behalf of West Safka, question question.
Thank you, Paul.
We have other staff as well, so if there's a topic, I'd suggest just calling it out, then I can call the staff.
Traffic impact, bridges.
Yeah, Jason McCoy from the Transportation Division is here. Anything related to public infrastructure, Mark Collier from Community Management is here as well.
That's right.
So I would just suggest that as the questions come up, if it's not apparent, you can allow me to call the staff.
Council members, I wanted to give you a chance to ask questions. No, I'm fine. Council member, I'll call it? Concerns that folks have about population in regards, I mean, what kind of back plan we have. And let me maybe start, a few questions that I have. When do we see a completion for all three projects? 1500 Liberty, all the Yarborough, and assuming that, is it the other project, River Park? When would we see a completion for all these, looking at seven, 10 years? Where we look?
I mean, they're market-driven. 4,000 homes, and my community was proved in 1999, just finished with the last unit. So it could take, with Liberty, we've looked at around 10 to 15-year build-out, depending on the cycle of market. We, staff, don't dictate that. Any approval of any project would take another 18 to 24 months to do infrastructure and mapping, get through the process for permits. At that point, then, infrastructure, if those were granted, would then go forward, taking the amount of time it would need to get that before any vertical structure would be developed. So that you're probably looking three to five years for any belt to go vertical.
So let's say the completion, let's assume everything gets through. We're looking at 5,000 new homes in West Sacramento. So that increases, that increases population. Say everyone has, gonna be quite a few more. And I guess that's one of the concerns. I mean, I see gridlock, I go to my O-Solano Air Quality Management, just when all the cars have backed up, it takes me almost an hour sometimes to get yours. It was a little fast on the wheel still, the big chain. And I think that's one of the concerns, the impact. I mean, I was looking at all the pros. I love Liberty. When I heard about Liberty years ago, Pool Board, back, had a presentation, and I love the idea that they had multi-level income housing. You were talking Green Titans of Endespan with some of the nice, and in this area, nice families. There were a lot of positives that I really liked about the housing development. And now I'm really concerned, some of the cons are, we're losing our rural appeal out in, in the West Sacramento area to the South. Always had a concern that we've become a bedroom community, so I'll get to my question in just a second, just going over some of these cons that I, we have become a bedroom community in Sacramento. Sure.
I'll just there for a second. Mr. City Attorney, I just want to make sure we stay in the framework of what was presented before us. It was, I don't want to question the overall development of all of our projects. We need to really focus on the arguments presented, and the, and that's where our findings are.
We should just keep to the appeal? All right. Three to five, okay, the appeal, I think one of the things on the appeal was that-
Can I remind the council to speak into the microphones? We're having difficulty hearing people.
Okay, so this was done seven years ago, and I've, I've read that normally, when you do an EIR, they're good for about three to five years, depending on circumstances and all. So I guess my question is, on the appeal, there were concerns that were raised that when the planning com- when the planning commission didn't have access to the difference in the draft as opposed to what the EIR initially said. Can you, can you maybe address some of those concerns and some of the individuals that I'm, I guess I'm having a difficult time finding out on the appeal if the planning commission had an opportunity to listen to public comment as we're listening to it now?
The public comment was provided to the planning commission on October 19th, November 7th, December 19th, and January 30th in the public hearing.
Okay, so, right, so individuals such as these individuals showed up to this public hearing before the planning commission?
There's some new ones tonight, but there were others that...
Okay, so they had an opportunity. So I guess in terms of the appeal, we've heard a lot of testimony, and I guess my question is, is an EIR so outdated after seven years with all the changes that are coming about that there is reason to give some credence that an appeal should be considered?
Jeff, could you answer on that?
I can speak to that. First, there is, there is no law that requires an EIR to be updated within certain period. Question is whether or not the information is still current. I think from my perspective and having looked at the issues that have been raised, similar, some of the same traffic issues or similar traffic issues were raised with the Yarborough. I understand that people have witnessed a lot of growth that's occurred in Southport. However, the EIR is a forward-looking document, and it is intended to be an information document that will look at not only the situation at the moment in time when it's prepared, but also what is anticipated to be developed in a period. So the EIR did contemplate development that has occurred. The developments that we were looking at, I think Mr. Goddard put up a graphic, those are all developments that were consistent with the general plan, consistent with zoning, and so would have been taken into account in looking at things like traffic. And then in terms of other issues that were raised, in terms of whether or not the flood situation is different, I think I would defer to Paul on that, but my understanding is that, I think Mr. Kemper made the point, the EIR is an information document. The question before you is whether or not the EIR contained information dealing with the issues that have been raised. I think at one point, Mr. Goddard quoted from the EIR as a, to provide an example of the risk of flood. And my answer to that is yes, that's exactly right. The EIR described the fact that there was a risk of flood. It is, it is ultimately an information tool for which the planning commission and then council makes decisions on substantive questions of whether this project should go forward. But the appeal today is primarily focused on the adequacy of the EIR, and I think from my perspective and staff's perspective, the EIR analyzed those impacts. There are folks here who have an opinion that they don't like the conclusion that a project should go forward, and I can respect that. But that's not an issue of the adequacy of the EIR.
2016 reference was made, reference to 2016 EIR was made, I believe.
2016 EIR is the general plan EIR.
Correct.
All right. And I guess that's what I have some concern with, that it differs so much, they're saying, from the, from the one that we currently have.
Well, the 2016 general plan EIR was the EIR prepared for, the general plan 2035 that is in effect today. The change between the DIR, the draft DIR, and the final EIR for Liberty was made in part in recognition of the fact that the recommended mitigation in the draft DIR for Liberty was actually inconsistent with the general. And as you'll recall, the city has required that all projects have to be consistent with the general. So it created an anomalous situation where you had the general plan identifying risk of flood as a significant unavoidable impact that the council overrode. And the draft EIR for Liberty suggesting, well, except we could mitigate it to less than significant. And the, the approach that was taken was to say for the final EIR, we need to make sure that the Liberty EIR's conclusion on flood risk is the same as the general plan's conclusion on...
Jeff, on the 200 years, we saw those maps, the ones that you favorite. That's another, I mean, what would be the difference between 200-year as opposed to a 25?
I'm going to let Paul do that one.
I will, I will allow for staff to answer all those questions as well. In other words, all of the testimony that has been presented, if, after, if you have a chance, I want, like the opportunity for staff, it doesn't require all of us to ask all those specific questions. I wanted the staff to, to answer some of the testimony that was provided and also the presentation from both the applicant and the, and the appellant. But, but I just want to make sure that what you heard was, I'm hoping that staff will be able to answer those questions, too. If you, if you want to take a second to give staff a chance to speak about that first, we can take that moment at this time, and then we'll bring it back to, for the council to be asking questions. So why don't we allow for the staff to present feedback, all of everybody, from what you've heard tonight? Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Hardy?
No, I defer to the staff on those items.
And just to help try to frame this, because I mean, asking Paul to talk about flood protection, he's very, very passionate about this. I think the nature of the question where you were going is to start with kind of a basic explanation of what do we mean when we say a 200-year flood versus a 25-year flood risk? And then how, how is the city, you know, the requirements around SB 5 compliance that were brought up? So just hopefully, Paul, that, that makes sense in terms of giving an overview, and then specifically, you know, how the city is progressing towards SB 5 compliance?
I took notes, but I don't have a prepared script. So, a couple of things. Yes, number of years ago, Bigger Waters Act was passed to try to improve FEMA mapping requirements across the nation, across the nation. West Sacramento does continue to be unmapped. Our FEMA map is from 1995. It still shows that most of the city is in Zone X. Zone X anticipates that there's protection from a one-in-100-year chance of a flood. So that's the FEMA requirement. The Central Valley Board relative to SB 5 is seeking to get 200-year flood protection for the entire Central Valley. And so when we do our reports annually to talk about adequate progress, we talk about the role that we've been taking, the projects that we've completed, the plans that we have, our financials relative to being able to carry out the project. So I just want to make, so those are two distinguishing things that I want, that I heard tonight by a number of people. Let me also say that I, I want to reckon, we all should recognize that this city is surrounded by levees, and there is an inherent risk of flooding. However, since 2007, the city, and then West Safka, has been on a regular mission to correct deficiencies of the entire levee system. We have taken the approach of addressing the worst case first. So luckily for us, the voters of the state of California approved flood funds in 2006. We were able to complete four significant projects, the CHP Academy, the Rivers Project, the I Street Project, and then the largest and most ambitious of all the projects, Southport. Southport was a continuation of a project that the Army Corps of Engineers had already worked on, a small setback levy that people don't really realize, I don't think, too often. But right at the, right at the stone lock opening to the Sacramento River, right along the west bank, they, they built a small setback levy, the Southport levy, then connected to that levy using modern engineering methods and to produce a levy that would qualify as a 200-year flood control levy. 200-year certification only comes when the entire system has achieved 200 years. And so it's something that we're continually striving for and continuing to work toward. Timing, a number of the, a number of pieces of the information that were provided to you around the deficiencies of the West Sacramento system and its deficiencies are taken from the same period that the Army Corps of Engineers was evaluating the city and its levee system. And those deficiencies were notable significantly because of how the levees were constructed. Every, some of the things that you heard today are true. They were constructed by farmers. They were constructed by using dredgings from the river. They did rely on gravity and a lot of work to try to make sure that those levees were complete. Before the Army Corps of Engineers and this project became federalized, we went through thorough evaluations. Those were done by HDR and other engineering firms to identify what deficiencies should be addressed first. The projects that I've already mentioned to you are where those greatest deficiencies were, the most notable problems. You saw some photos this evening that showed slumping along the Deepwater Ship Channel levy. That's true. It happens. There are slumps in levees. And what else did you see? You also saw them covered with plastic or viscose, secured with sandbags. Every year, we generally have to look and monitor all of the levees, especially during high-water events. High-water events are those when the water is raising, is at 36 feet above ground sea or main, mean sea level and continuing to rise. RD 900, as the Reclamation District, is actively patrolling when that happens. Similarly, in the north part of the, of the city, Department of Water Resources has responsibility, and their people also get out and patrol the levees. There is a lot of cross-communication and coordination to make sure that if we identify a levy that may be failing or a deficiency, that we can address it. One really important clarification here, it's $1.1 billion and not $1 trillion. That was a, that's a misstatement. I don't know where that comes from, but the fact of the matter is, in 2020, when the Army Corps of Engineers did their total cost update, it was $1.1 billion. Congressional authorization granted to the city with a new start in 2022 authorized that amount of money to be able to complete the entire West Sacramento project. If you have any, I tried to, I tried to cover the gamut of things that I heard today, recognizing the citizens have concerns and that there are reasons to be concerned. At the same time, West Safka and the city have been working diligently to try to correct the deficiencies and have the strongest levee system that we could have to protect lives and property.
There was a reference to a Noriega statement, 50-mile radius, if there was a break within a 50-mile radius, within two hours, we would be under 20 feet of water. Does that make sense?
So I've seen the, so we specifically contracted with a firm to do flood inundation scenarios, risk scenarios. And if there were a significant levy breach, the, one of the, if it happened in the north, the north area basin would, would flood. And if it was still unmitigated, that flooding would probably continue into Southport. But this is a breach we're talking about. This would be something that's going to happen. It would generally be an extraordinary event or some other force that would cause that. Different from other catastrophes, specifically earthquakes, we generally are watching when there are atmospheric rivers that are forecast. We prepare, we start, the Public Works Department starts preparing, the Fire Department starts preparing, West Safka starts preparing, the Reclamation Districts across California start preparing for major water events. So we are always hoping that we're always going to get to be able to mitigate, and thus far, we have not had, experienced a breach. Some of the flooding that was talked about in 1986, very significant year for flooding across, across Northern California, I believe the city of, that's the year that the city of Nichols also experienced significant flooding, is before the Southport levy was built. And so that, that, those, those items that were brought up in terms of Davis Road have been mitigated with the new setback levy.
Go ahead. We heard, I'm always interested in data and being able to verify some of our, our sources, and so I, one, take you for your word, but also because this is what you, you work on. We heard that West Sacramento has the worst levees in California. Is that the case? And then how is that rated?
So, first of all, I don't know how anybody could say what is worse because catastrophic failures happen through levee systems. What I can tell you is that in recent history, we've never seen a levy breach, and when we've had deficiencies, they've been corrected.
Is there, I think of it kind of like our roads, right? And I guess it's all relative. There's rating for roads, right? And so just as an example, you'll hear our residents say like, man, we, we have the worst roads, right? But when you actually, again, look at the rating of it, again, it's all relative, that's not, that's not the case, again, according to what is agreed upon by experts. And so in this case, I guess what you're hearing me also ask is, is there agreed-upon ratings for levees? Or is that, is that not something that, that happens? And if not, that's okay. But then to your point, if there isn't a rating, I don't know, sort of, short of it being subjective, that we could actually say the city of West Sacramento has the worst levees in California.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with you. There's not a, there's not a specific rating system for levees. As I said a little bit earlier, the 200-year level of protection comes from a certification when the system is complete, which is why we report to Central Valley Board about how is the system, how is our system that protects the city?
Just, and I, I want to make sure I understood, and so one of the things that you noted was as you are improving the system, and I don't sit on West Safka, and so I'm sad my colleague's not out here, because I'm sure Verna would be able to also understand this.
I'm going to call this.
Yes, yes, but, but, but both wasn't, was not a hit, I promise. If it was, you'd know. But in regards to just understanding what you noted on the system, that it needs to go through the 100 or the 200 years, or you mentioned something along the lines of in order for it to be fully rated, it had to have lived a certain lifecycle? Did I, did I misunderstand that, or?
So whenever we've complete a levy portion, we generally, well, we've done it with and without the Army Corps of Engineers. Presently, we're, we're completely working with the Army Corps of Engineers as well as the state of California. But these smaller sections, we go through the process. We, the Corps still had, the Army Corps of Engineers still has to approve the levy plans. They still have to approve the levy at the end of it. But to get to a 200-year certification requires a certification of the system and not of a particular segment.
Okay.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get to, so I'm not, it's a difficult question to answer because it's something that we're always striving for, and as was pointed out, the system is dynamic. There is erosion that occurs. There are times when we do have these small, we have deficiencies that need to be addressed. And so it's a, it's going to be an ongoing, just like you, your, your example of calling, you know, talking about streets, you know, and street maintenance is the same, same idea. You know, we fixed the street 10 years ago, but oh my gosh, I got to go back and fix it again. And the same thing can be said of part of the levy segments that are, that are protecting the city.
Paul, I think it's, it's worth reiterating again, the, in terms of a flood risk standard from the FEMA standpoint, that if you could talk about that again, that from that standpoint, the city is not in a flood zone from a, from a flood risk standpoint on the federal level.
That's right. That's right. So people use the term flood zone, and I don't, it's just kind of... So, people use the term flood zone, and I don't, it's just kind of, it's just confusing to me. So, essentially, because they, FEMA uses a lettering system, right? So they, they talk about it as being Zone X, which is there's less than a one, and one percent chance of a flood happening in any given year. And that's just, that's the best rating system that I can provide, really. Because otherwise, it's not, it's because we're not at a place where all the improvements have been completed and all of the segments are, are known to be providing the two-hundred-year flood protection. So we're not at a place where we can say it's certified as a two-hundred-year, or a, which would then put us into a zone, which would be to say, it's less than one-half of one percent in any given year of a flood.
So you're going to have to, because if it's confusing for you, and you're an expert, you can imagine how I, how I feel. I have a PhD. I don't have a PhD in everything. And so I'm going to reflect back what, what I just heard. And so, within any given year, we have less than a one percent chance of a major flood? Did I, did I articulate that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, that, that does not feel like the worst levee system in, in California. So I guess I, I struggle. Is that normal to have less than a one percent chance? Or is it that really it should be less than a half percent chance, or?
No, no, no. Thanks for asking the question. So let me, let me, let me provide a little bit more clarity. Rural levees are much worse off than urban levees, generally speaking. There's been, there's been a regular movement and monies and capital expenditures to improve the urban level of risk protection. So Sacramento has been working through that. West Sacramento has been working through that. Now we see that happening in San Joaquin County, as we know. Last year, we saw the Paharo Project. That has also become a federal project, very similar in size to West Sacramento's. And so that's, it, we're all trying to work towards that level, the higher level of protection. Furthermore, all of the projects that I've named are generally affected, only one of them is really affected by the Sacramento Weir and the Yolo Bypass that I've mentioned, because we have been really focused on the Sacramento River, because it is very dynamic and it has a lot of hydraulic forces that cause, that have the potential to cause greater Because of the Sacramento Weir and the Sacramento Weir's expansion, those, that likelihood is reducing all the, is, is being reduced. So there's, the Sacramento Weir opens when the waters reach flood stage, I believe they're twenty-nine and, and rising. What that, when, when that happens, I don't know if you've been out there, if you've been at the, or if you've been at Discovery Park or somewhere around where you could see that, but essentially what happens is that water start from the American River, starts flowing upstream and into the bypass. And the bypass has a way of neutralizing some of that water and carrying a greater, much greater volume of water than the Sacramento River, thereby also reducing the risk. So when we're talking about a major high-water event, the Weir provides a significant amount of protection, not something that I can actually kind of quantify, but, but I'm telling you that it's a, it's a major improvement to the system. The fact that the Folsom Dam now has a new spillway, also allows them, and new, and new shutters, allows them to have more controlled flows. So when I first started working in the program, that wasn't the case. And some things-
When was that?
I started working in this program in 2011.
Okay.
And so some of the flows were, were very significant and caused a lot of concern, because really what happens is, is you see the American River has a direct shot right at the shores of West Sacramento. So I just, I want to point out that those two, those two improvements have really provided a certain amount of engineering control and a level of protection that's difficult to quantify on a, when we're talking about this generally, in a general sense.
And, and so last question, at least from, for me for now. And so what is normally happening? Because you talked about major levee improvements, not only happening here, but there are projects happening across California. You mentioned a couple. And what is the normal process as you continue to work to improve, even having less than a one percent chance of a, of a major flood event? Is it, are, is the normal process for cities that you've seen, right? I'll say that, that you've seen, to wait on building? Or do you build and also improve at the same time? I'm trying to figure out what should be the expectation and what is the, the general expectation?
Thank you for the question.
Yeah.
So, as Councilwoman Apollo will attest to, there's been a significant amount of work recently being done in the north area of the city, between the Sacramento Weir and the Tower Bridge. And the work that we're doing is largely investigative in nature. So we've been doing geotechnical borings in the rivers, up by the rear. All of that feeds into the design, because what most, most levees are earth-in-levees. And so they're all made up of some sort of, of soil types. They look at the various soil types, and if there's some soil types, they're much more vulnerable to flooding or, or to deficiencies. Others are more cohesive in nature and provide a certain amount of resistance to those forces. Similarly, we've had a risk cadre from the Army Corps of Engineers, look at different pinch points or different locations where there could be deficiencies. So, I say all that because you can't have a continuous levee construction program, because it takes three to five years to get to a final design. You have to go through the process. And the Army Corps of Engineers process is rigorous and difficult, and I have to also say, it feels very long.
Okay. You're done?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. This is, maybe, you can't answer this, maybe it's our council that needs to answer it. I was rather concerned with a statement was made about a conflict. I sat on the board with Councilwoman Sapizo Hall and with Tom Ramos on the board. Is there any conflict here with Dan Ramos as a developer? Is he involved with these projects?
Well, Dan Ramos, as, as a board member, would be subject to the Political Reform Act, just as you are, and would presumably recuse himself when a project came before him that created a conflict of interest. I don't advise them, but he's, he is subject to all the same conflict of interest rules you are.
And just to be clear, there, we're talking about two of the Ramos family. Tom Ramos is a RD nine hundred board member representing RD five thirty-seven on that board. Dan Ramos, there was an incorrect statement that Dan Ramos is a RD nine hundred board member. That is not true, as you know.
Right. We, we are RD nine hundred board members, your council members.
But with Safco mentioned, that's why I'm asking. I want to make certain, because it was said, and I want to make that's clear.
Just one more question, if you're okay with it?
Girl.
Oh, yes.
So go ahead and ask the question.
Okay, so who's next? I'm just going to ask one more. She, she, she was kind enough to allow me just to, and I promise, it really is just the last one. We experienced, I think it was last year, our mayor, Councilwoman Barosko, myself, and Sapizo Hall had the opportunity to have Congresswoman Matsui, as well as the National Representative for the Army Corps of Engineers, hopefully I said that correctly, come out and actually recognize our levees. And so I have to admit, there also, for me, is a level of cognitive dissonance that is happening, in which I'm trying to connect, having the National Representative sort of across the country come to West Sac and say, you are a beacon for your levees and the work that you've done. And then what I heard tonight, and so, could you maybe just touch on just a tiny bit, what we were recognized for and, and our levee system? Because I, I'm unsure if, whether our, our residents just didn't know, or, because it, if you were to sit through public comment tonight, it sounds as, it sounds as if, any minute now, we are going to be underwater. And I don't necessarily think that is reflective of the many years I've been here and, and heard from, on our levee system. And, and so I think it would just be important to note that.
So, two things. One is, the Southport project is a unique project because of how it's constructed and where it's constructed. So a setback levee in an urban area is not very common. It's something that you generally would see more in a, a more rural area, where someone might be willing to say, yes, I'm willing to give up some property for more flood protection for my farm, for my farm or my farming community. So that was one thing. But the other thing about Southport is, there's three things I'm going to talk about. One is, so it was done in phases, right? Three phases of Southport. One was beyond, once we got to construct, build a setback levee. So the setback levee is unique in that it also has a cutoff wall and a seepage berm. So these are two, that's a redundant system that helps to provide flood protection for the area of Southport from the Sacramento River. So that's one. Two, you may recall that before that levee was built, people had, their exit was to go out of South River Road. South River Road was relocated to Village Parkway. This was, this was another phase of this project. So the whole idea was to try to separate flood maintenance and flood emergency response activities from the general public. So that was the second thing. Also a very important thing in terms of evacuation, keeping people safe, and still being able to flood fight. Lastly, it also included a mitigation area to try to mitigate for that project as well as future projects. That mitigation area, I don't know if you've been out there lately, but when we planted those trees in 2017, they were little saplings. Today-
I told you, you got an award, and I was right there.
They're forty feet tall. Now what happens? So when the water, when the water rises, Southport mitigation area floods up, right? The water comes up against the levee, but it's already been slowed down because of all of that roughage that's been planted there. So it causes, it's, the velocities are reduced, the potential for erosion on the new levee is reduced, and it really provides a very redundant and strong system.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I want to take a moment to, you know, get a break. We do have one witness that was, sorry, one witness that was left out from the list. And I, it's getting to be ten o'clock and late, in case you wanted to. My neighbor. Paul, if you could just wait for a second, and we'll have Ms. Flint come on up. Madam Clerk, you could-
Thank you, Ms. Flint. I wanted to apologize on the record to Ms. Flint. That was my fault. I missed her comment hard.
That's okay. It's punishment for the way I acted at the last. So, anyway. My name is Pat Flint. I'm a seventy-six-year resident of West Sacramento, and I currently live in Southport. This is a condensed version of my written testimony. As you are aware, I have long been an advocate for public safety. On your website, flood his, under flood history, West Sacramento is particularly susceptible to flooding due to the location of the confluence of the Sacramento-American rivers. Due to Hurricane Katrina, the United States Corps of Engineers upped the standards for the levees, and the city, as mandated by the State of California, must have a two-hundred-year flood protection, also from your website. In nineteen eighty-six, in nineteen eighty-six, record flows and high winds caused severe damage to levees. We were in the process of moving back to California from Arizona. The Yolo Bypass was overlapping the levee into West Sacramento. At the time, we were not sure if West Sacramento would need to be evacuated. In nineteen ninety-seven, the New Year's Day flood is one of the largest experienced floods in Northern California. As a result of high water, levees along the Sacramento and Yolo bypasses and with the RD, within the RD nine hundred along the Sacramento River sustained heavy damage. We were in Virginia and heard about it on the national news. In two thousand five, two thousand six, the Central Valley storms caused significant runoff over much of California. This caused many rivers and streams to rise above flood stage. This is one of the scariest times for me. A relative notified me that heavy equipment was working to shore up the West Sacramento side of the levee in Southport. Nothing was being reported on anything in West Sacramento. The River Road was closed. It was closed off. I called several city numbers, checked city website, nothing. I finally checked, I finally reached an officer at the non-emergency number at police station, and he informed me that the police, fire, police and fire were out there monitoring the levees along the RD nine hundred, along with RD nine hundred crews. We had boils, considerable seepage at the time, boils and considerable seepage at the time, and I knew that that would compromise our lever, levees. What was going on? How severe was the damage on our levee? Would I have had enough time to get my elderly mother, if she still resided in the state streets? No city communication, no emergency preparedness, no known evacuation, evacuation routes, and no known emergency centers. Skipping to 2017, Northern California saw the wettest winter in almost a century. Many rivers were at flood stage. On February seventh, heavy flows damaged a spillway at Orville Dam. I was in Lake Tahoe, snowed in. All highways were closed. I was worried that the volume of water from the Orville Dam and reservoirs that were at capacity might cause flooding in West Sacramento. Getting back to the Liberty Development, it was a project I fully supported until the city started changing, amending zoning and the general plan.
Paul, if you don't mind coming back. I have questions, but I think, I think my council members here have. Hold on. Councilmember Barosko.
Thank you, Mr. Dirkson. Just a moment ago, my colleague was asking a barrage of questions, which I found very, very helpful in painting the picture of the way we should be framing this conversation. But before we continue with that, because I, I negated lots of my questions as a result of your responses, might I ask, you, you had mentioned that you began this project specifically in West Sacramento in 2011?
I joined the flood team in 2011.
Okay.
I, West Safco.
And then prior to joining the flood team, did you have any expertise in the area of flood?
Uh, no, I did project management. I worked in the redevelopment agency prior to that.
And in 2000, how long have you been employed with the city of West Sacramento?
It'll be twenty-one years on the fifth.
And of those twenty-one years, fourteen of them have been specifically related to flood matters?
That's correct.
Okay. And currently, what is your title, sir?
I'm the flood, I'm the flood manager.
And what type of training or experience have you received in order to do the job that you do?
Oh, um, well, I've done a, besides, there's a lot of project management. It's been mostly, it's a lot of on-the-job training, a lot of trainings that I've attended, participating with various flood managers throughout the, the region. But I do not, I have a, I have a degree in planning and development, and, but I do not have a, I'm not an engineer.
Are you part of any associations that have to deal with flood, or anything?
The Flood Management Association, yes.
Thank you. And have you traveled to Washington DC and dealt with any of the flood teams on the national level related to issues related to West Sacramento's flood?
Yes, for the last three years.
And as part of your duties, has it been your experience to have an intimate knowledge of West Sacramento levee program specifically?
Sometimes, this program is big. Twenty-five miles surround, or fifty-two miles protecting the city, twenty-five square miles. It's a big project. And much of the work that is done through our program is working both with the state as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as a wide cadre of consultants that participate in either evaluating levees or providing environmental clearance, cultural resource investigation, and making sure that the tribes are represented and understand what is going on, so that we're not providing, disturbing any of, any of their known or unknown relics. So it's a, there's a wide, there's a wide range of responsibilities to carry out a levee program, and it, beyond just construction of a levee. I'm sorry, I'm not answering your question.
No, you're answering it perfectly. Thank you. I'm wondering, had you had the opportunity to review the flood plan with West Sacramento?
Yeah.
And would you say you've done so one time or more than one time?
I, probably more than one time, but I reference it every once in a while.
And you had mentioned the Southport and spoke about the levee setback, and you're referencing how even the complexion of that area has changed even the last few years since we've, we've put that work in, correct?
Yes.
And, and, yeah, tonight, we've heard a variety of different claims from members of the community as well as the appellant, and many of which have, you know, I've written down and have, there's, I found to be very alarming. And like my colleague, councilmember, excuse me, early mentioned, I've also been part of many events and- I've also been part of many events and conversations where we have been lauded and celebrated for our expensive and extensive investments in our flood, our levy, excuse me. I've wrote down that we are now at a more increased and significant risk of flood with respect to the Liberty project. Is this, based on your training and experience and your intimate knowledge of our flood system, is it your contention that that is a correct representation? That should the Liberty project be approved, that this would increase the people's flood risk here in the city of West Sacramento?
No, I don't believe so.
And what leads you to that conclusion, sir?
Development behind the levies has been occurring for the whole time that I've been working in the flood program, whether that's in the Bridge District or whether that's the, I'm sorry, Corella project, I guess it is, Seacons project. They continue to build behind the setback levy, and so it caused no increase or concern for flood risk because of that new development. And I don't see how new development in and of itself can be seen as causing an increased flood risk.
Earlier, my colleague, councilmember, councilmember Early had mentioned that it is our, or maybe she questioned whether or not it is that we continue to fortify the levies while continuously building and development. And it was your answer that, yes, we do. And that is a common practice throughout the region, throughout other cities, throughout the state of California?
Generally, unless the city is built out. And I, let me be really clear. The Central Valley, we really respond to the Central Valley Board and to the Central Valley's requirements. So really, we're talking about the levies that are in Northern California, and so I don't want to speak for the entire state. But generally speaking, we're talking about the water flows that come from everywhere, from Lake Shasta and from the other, the American River watershed.
Mr. Dixon, is it your duty as a member of this, the city staff and being the flood manager to do everything you can to protect and serve the members of the West Sacramento community?
Absolutely, that's why I do this job.
Thank you. And if you were to hear the contention that if this council were to approve the planning commission's approval for the Liberty project, if you were to hear that, the contention that in doing so, we would be putting lives in danger, would you agree with that assessment?
No.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. All right. Councilmember Akala.
Two questions. How many houses are planned for River Park? I know it hasn't come up yet.
I think that's probably a...
It's a flood question, because it has to do with how many houses we're getting out there, the safety of getting people out. Okay.
It's a somewhat complicated, because you have the two thousand eight unit count, about twenty-seven thirty-two units, and they're currently requesting, I believe it's seven, pardon, about a quarter increase, but that hasn't come for you yet.
No, I know, I know. But, I mean, we're looking at overall safety.
Are you, are you talking about evacuation?
That's why, that's where I'm leading.
So that's the, so I do want to ask Paul another question before we get to the evacuation.
Just one more question real quick, and then, and just, how long would it take to evacuate current population that we have?
Okay, so that is still an evacuation. I would like to speak, ask Paul on specific...
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, Paul. I have a few levy issues here that I've been hearing tonight. And, and I appreciate my colleagues, you know, emphasizing the work we've been doing, and especially the work that, you know, the city has been doing. And of course, this is, if any issue is that that is a crisis, that would reach a crisis, or as a disaster, is a flood. And that has been the city's priority for, especially after New Orleans. You know, we saw what happened there, quickly prioritized getting a tax revenue measure on the ballot approved, and we've been working very hard. Thank you so much for describing all the work that has been done to reach to the two-hundred-year flood level protection that we have. And currently, what we have is flood level X. Okay. And with that, are we required to have flood protection, insurance?
But, no, flood zone X does not require flood insurance.
I'm still asking...
We still, no. If any caller asks me, I tell them you live behind a levy, I would suggest that you have flood insurance.
Thank you. And I really would like to have the staff answer the questions, please. Thank you. And with that, because I heard that somebody, you know, received flood protection and had a high fee, can you speak a little bit about the cost of flood insurance here in West Sacramento?
I can speak generally.
Okay.
So FEMA has also gone through something that they call flood insurance two point zero. And the, it doesn't have full congressional support, but the intention of the FEMA staff was to try to make sure that the premiums that were being collected were going to cover the losses. For many years, FEMA and the flood insurance program has been underfunded, and therefore, they've been trying to advance a project so that when you come to the actuarial tables, that it's closely, the amount that people are paying for flood insurance is more closely tied to the potential for loss.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, could you clarify, though, that, that, I believe it was always the case that buying flood insurance when it's not required, if you're not in a flood zone, versus waiting until after? I think that's kind of where the question was going. There is a difference in the rate when you're required to buy flood insurance.
That's right.
Okay. Good to know.
Could you just quickly explain that?
I remember that as an issue, yes, thank you.
Getting earlier into the flood insurance program is of great benefit, because if you try to use the program after, after a catastrophic event, you're already going to have a higher rate. So there's a, there's a grandfathering clause, as they say, that helps minimize rate increases.
I recall we received little inserts in our bills. Aaron, do you remember that? Asking, notifying us to purchase flood insurance?
Yeah, I think that was at a time in the city when there was, there was more of a thought that remapping could be, you know, happening sooner.
I remember that.
And so there was a push to, hey, if you're, if you're, if you buy flood insurance, I think, as Paul said, we live behind levies, it's not a bad idea. Flooding can occur in many forms. There's internal drainage that can cause problems and floods, and flood insurance applies there as well. So, so I think we did a push to encourage people to buy it, knowing, you know, it's still the case that if you wait till after remapping, which, you know, we don't know when that will occur, but it could eventually, there is a significant savings between the two.
Okay.
And I believe that's still the case, it sounds like.
That's right.
Are you familiar with the Davis Road buffer that you're issuing, or is that somebody else's issue? Because I heard something about a Davis Road buffer.
I believe that that is citing something that happened years ago, but I can't be certain of that.
If it's not, you don't worry about it.
It's not a, we don't look at Davis Road as a levy, so let me put it that way. It's not something that's in my purview.
And, and the comment regarding Black, Blacker Canal and water backing up into that, eroding that, is there, is there some, can you, is there something about that that, or is it an RD nine hundred issue?
It is an RD nine hundred issue. The Blacker Canal has been an ongoing issue because of, I don't know about erosion, but I do know that it gets clogged up, and I know that it backs up, and that there's, it's caused a lot of problems for neighbors. That's, I'm familiar with it, but it's not, it's not part of the levy system.
It's not part of the levy system?
That's...
Okay, thank you. And I think, one last question is about the Deepwater Ship Channel. You answered quite a, quite a few of my questions, I saw the photographs. And I do know that Department of Water Resources has provided some guidance. And the reason for that is not because there could be a breach. I think there's, that water along the port has a lot more control over how much water goes in there, based, and based in the future, if we, if they wanted to shift the direction of water, if needed, that there was a reason to, you know, build out that levy. But in this case, can you help us understand? Because although we've been hearing about all the work, there is an area along the Deepwater Channel that is not getting worked on, or is it? Can you just give me a little more background? Because of the Central Valley flood protection, you know, system, you described how water goes into certain directions, and there's a lot of control where the water can go for the safety. And I, and I know when we go up to DC to advocate, there's this great map, which talks about where the wa, you know, the direction of all the water and the areas that we needed to shore up, and we have had a lot of response over the years to shore things up, you know, as you mentioned, the Folsom Dam and what happened there. So because of that, I just wanted to bring up the, an area that I just didn't want to overlook in the conversation was the Deepwater Ship Channel, and, you know, what can be done, or is that a threat in the city?
Okay. So, very kind of a difficult conversation, but deepwater ship channels, levies, the port levies, let me put it this way, it's probably better, the port levies, the water that affects the port levies is water that's, you know, that is either from flows, and it maintains a certain level, right? It's also connected tidally to the, to the bay, right, to the, to the Greater Delta. That levy, when you think about how the Deepwater Ship Channel comes, and then it makes a hard, if you're looking, if you're looking from the south, right, it makes a right-hand turn, right, into the, into the Turning Basin. So that's the east, that's the, that's the east, that's the west, the Port West levy. And if you look, you know that the deep, you know that beyond that is the bypass. That levy slope has seen a number of different sloughs, different deficiencies that have been corrected in many different years. A previous, previously, a previous group put in some drainage instead of just naturally draining, like we were talking about, the Blacker Canal doesn't have a culvert. We put in a culvert to try to direct the, that water and keep it from causing more harm at the toe of that levy. That levy does have failures, but I also want to remind people, if you walk out there, you know that it's quite a ways from that levy, from that side of the levy, to the deep, to the, to the Yolo Bypass. So the chances of a breach over at that levy are fairly small. There's a lot of, there's a lot of material between that levy slope and the, and the Yolo Bypass. It's a little bit different as you move up towards Highway eighty. So after the turn, that the, that the, you know, where the port is, that levy, this, we call it the Yolo Bypass East Levy, was repaired in twenty twenty-three. This past year, during final inspection, they noticed some deficiencies. The Army Corps of Engineers acted on that. They declared an emergency, and they built the new adjacent levy. So when it came time to address a significant deficiency, as we were coming in the flood season, the team responded, specifically, the Army Corps of Engineers responded in a major way and was able to use material from the port, from their operations, to be able to build a setback levy. So that also has gone through a major repair, and we are confident that part of that emergency repair will become part of the permanent repair. And it will be evaluated, just like all the other levies, to make sure that it is providing the level of protection that we're seeking.
All right, thank you. And, and you mentioned, I know, I just want to reiterate it, you know, whenever there is a boil, a breach, or something happens, can you explain the number of partners that we have to, to do the repair work? And, and how things get funded and taken care of, so that the city is safe?
Sure, some, so, because the Army Corps did that fix, they came to, they charged in and took control, and, and they worked directly with Department of Water Resources and West Safka to make sure that we could put in that repair. Smaller sloughing, we, the Reclamation District reports back to us. We talked to our consultant group, we talked to our team, and we tried to address those. Even at the Southport levy, there was a little bit of slippage, there was some, some, I don't remember what they called it. It was a settling issue. And so it needed a small repair on the land side, not on the water side, on the land side. And it was just basically to make sure that we kept, maintained the levy geometry as designed. So we have particular approaches to monitoring and trying to correct deficiencies in a timely manner to ensure that there is not a breach.
Great, thank you so much, Paul. Great, we appreciate your expertise.
Thank you.
Okay, so next round of questions is emergency evacuation?
Yeah, that is, I mean, I'm satisfied with the flood and everything you've done to mitigate, you know, potentially be problems in our levies and stuff like that, even on the Safka board. Feel very confident with all the federal monies and everything. But the evacuation, I think, has been a big, big concern, getting more people into an area. I think someone referred to it, Mr., referred to it as a bowl. So I guess that's the concern I have currently. Our evacuation plan, how long would it take to evacuate? Whether it's a flood or anything else that, something catastrophic?
So if I can have whoever's going to talk about an evacuation plan, if you can first respond to the applicant, the appellant's, and public comments, if you have any comments first to respond to that, and then, councilmember Akala's questions after that, please.
Okay.
Does, does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, by the way. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Brian Johnson, Fire Marshal.
Thank you, Brian.
You know, just trying to process all the, all the comments. Here, there's a few different things. I think, one, we do have an evacuation plan. If you see the chief's memo, there's a link to the city's webpage that has some of our documents and a link to the county's website, where there's a long list. And the reason why that exists is that we are a member of Yolo County Joint Emergency Management System, which brings a lot of the cities together, along with the county OES, to work together collaboratively to write these plans, put them together. Now, they may appear as, look as Yolo County, but we are in Yolo County. The principles, the guidance that the documents provide are universal across the board. So with that, access those plans, they are West Sacramento plan, of us being in Yolo County. I, I think you also noticed in the, in the memo, it stated that we are taking that Yolo County evacuation annex, making some amendments to make it more West Sacramento-centric. Given the exposure that we have to flood, it is a very big tool for us, and so we just want to make sure that it's solid across the board. No question as intent who it's for with that. And that is in the process of being completed right now. I think, looking at some of the questions and concern is maybe the availability of information, given we're in the process of updating our plan and tools that accompany that plan for the public and for emergency services. We plan to have workshop. Now, we did one in two thousand nineteen. I don't know if you remember, Madam Mayor, you were there with just a couple of people?
Yes, I remember that.
Which is kind of typical, not, nobody really gets excited with emergency management other than maybe the chief, a couple other people, but, and the mayor. We plan on doing that, on doing that again. It sounds like, you know, the structure of the settlement will include a couple of those workshops, but we may do a couple others to cover a larger subject of emergency management in general and big on personal preparedness. So we do have a plan. It is available to the public, and we have some workshops that will kind of explain those plans, emergency management efforts in general, and other tools that could be helpful to the public. So I hope that's helpful, maybe, I hope, to some of the people here today. And then, is there any specific questions that you may have?
I think we, we all might have. Councilmember Akala is questioning the emergency evacuation.
Brian, how long would it take to evacuate a city?
It all depends. I, I don't...
What do you project? I mean, obviously, when you make the plans.
Are we talking a whole city evacuation? Are we talking, we haven't done studies to talk about specific section or even a whole evacuation of the city in general.
I'm not trying to be difficult, it's just that there are people out there that are concerned. They're feeling that if we do have a levy break, that there would be a real problem.
Well...
It would go twenty feet under, let's assume we have a major levy break.
Well, it all depends on, we, we respond to the problem that's presented to us. So that's, you know, one of the, well, what's the plan? How are you going to get us out of here? We don't know until the plan, till the problem is presented. And I know that makes it difficult... And I know that makes it difficult to to accept because, because you want to be informed, you want to know how to get out, but I can't tell you, okay, you're going to go this route, you're going to take the street, and you're going to turn right and left, because if the problem's there, that's not going to be helpful to the public. One thing, one tool that we do have for the public is our general map, our evacuation map, and it highlights all the major thoroughfares that go through the city, because those are going to be the ones that we utilize one way or another.
Brian, is there any city that knows, that can answer that, any city model that can, that has a modeling that the council member's asking?
In West Sacramento?
No, any city in California?
Yeah, in other words, this is typical in throughout the United States. And also, I think, just to put a, put a finer point on that, you can hopefully build on this, to your, to your question, it, part of what it depends is, in a, in a flood situation, let's say, it depends on where a levy breach occurs. That that will greatly impact the focus of the of the evacuation area, the routes that can be used, so if you want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, again, it goes to the, the, we react to the problem that's presented to us. Again, if there's a breach in the north, the south could be safe depending on the situation, right? How, how significant, severe was the, was the breach? And as we meant, as I mentioned, in Yarborough, I don't want to kid anybody, evacu- and they provided some examples, evacuations are going to be difficult, it's going to take, they're going to be logistically challenging, strategically complex, it's going to be difficult to do. We, we don't do it every day, not everybody's ready to do it every day. We can control a lot of things, we can control the streets that we send people, we control the intersections, the staff, how we like, but what we can't control is almost 60,000 different elements of the evacuation plan, of people not prepared, don't have gas, don't want to follow instructions, and that's what makes it so difficult to do, to move that amount of people. Now, I can't talk to the capacity of our, of our streets, that's just the tool that we use to get people out. It will take time, and again, it will be, it will be challenging, I can't, that's, that's the reality, it is going to be that.
And and we're creating, and are we, as a council, when we approve these things, creating a greater danger by increasing more homes in the area?
I can't, I agree with that. You're creating, you're putting more, more vehicles on the road, that is correct.
Hi, hi, this is Pete Benz, I'd just like to jump in here a little bit. I would just like to say that in most occasions, the levy, the river levels are not a surprise. As the rivers rise, we know the lake levels, we know the river levels, we work closely with our partners, Reclamation, we have pre-winter meetings that include the Reclamation District's Public Works, Yolo OES, the emergency managers, our neighboring departments. We make sure that we're collaborating, whenever storms start coming, I heard atmospheric rivers earlier, all the email chains start going. When these rivers hit different levels, like monitor stage, and I hate to say flood stage, flood stage doesn't mean we're flooding, I don't know why they use that term, flood stage, they know when that reclamation starts patrolling the levees. If we were in a situation where we thought, I heard the word river topping or water topping over the levee, we would have evacuated long before waters have topped over the rivers. Our evacuation, our EOC would have been activated perhaps for weeks at that point, and we'd be making decisions daily, the city manager, the staff. This would not most likely be a knee-jerk reaction, this would be a well-thought-out and planned event. We have evacuation warnings, mandatory evacuations, we train every year, we're an all-hazard organization, but inevitably, every year, our EOC trainings revolve around flood, we're surrounded by levees. And when we do that, we work with our neighboring departments, OES, Yolo County, neighboring cities, PD, and so we ensure that we are able to initiate an evacuation. We would activate our EOC, and we would have a coordinated evacuation effort. So when it comes to river levels, yes, there could be some boils, there could be sloughing, we've experienced those in the past, we take that information in, we make determinations in the EOC, and we respond accordingly. Long before the water would ever top over the levee, we would have already initiated evacuation warnings, we would initiated an evacuation mandatories, and we would be evacuation, evacuating our community. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. Does it help? Okay, great. Councilmember Orozco, you have questions? I saw you riding away, really.
Often circumstantial evidence that I have something to say. No, actually, I was looking for some type of reassurance, and I think I heard a lot of it, that was helpful.
Okay, don't forget, oh, yeah, there's a mark. I can hear you. Okay, yes, Councilmember Early.
I, I think this is less question and more statement. As, as someone who deals in probabilities, who deals in, I'm a statistician by training, and the organization that I run, I'm constantly looking at models based on what is the information, all the data and information that we possibly have from previous years, trends, everything, putting it all together. And I think, and I'll, and I'll use what's happening right now as an example, what's happening federally, just as an example, of trying to anticipate something that is never happened before and/or happens every 100 years, and trying to get a definitive answer around, you know, to Councilmember Akala's point of, yeah, but how long would it take, right? Like, if this were to happen, and it is difficult when it, when it comes to the, the one-in-a-lifetime situation to say, and this is how long it would take, and it's because there's no data to inform that. And, and so unbeknownst probably to many of our residents and citizens that, that live in, in West Sacramento, there are constantly emergencies. There are constantly emergencies that the staff are dealing with and addressing, and we have no idea that they're happening. We do, but we, as everyday people, have no idea that they are constantly dealing with emergencies. But because of their preparedness, because of the work that is happening, we don't know because it doesn't impact us in that way. And so it is difficult, and I, and I completely understand, to have a plan that lists potential avenues for responding to an emergency. If this happens, then it would go here, if this happens, then here. And, and so I understand on a certain level, the, the uncertainty in not having a definitive answer to a once-in-a-lifetime event or something that could happen. But when it comes to potential floods, when it comes to the things that are happening all the time, every year, again, those emergencies are being addressed, which is, I think, also where I've, I've had some difficulties and some things that I've heard this evening because I know them to not be true, because we, as city council members, in my very short amount of time, being on city councils since 2021, I've seen them addressed. I've been trained in the emergency responses, right? I sit with staff when we are dealing with potential flooding and, and what's going to happen, and it isn't just a, oh, my gosh, what's going to happen, you know, within the next hour. It are, it is days leading up to working with our city manager, working with our assistant city manager, working with Chief Benz, working with Chief Strange, and I understand that it's like, but what happens if, again, that once-in-a-lifetime, we are constantly dealing with emergencies? And so that, that is the one thing I will say as it relates to the evacuation plan, I have other questions and comments for, for other staff, but I did want to just note that.
Okay, and just to clarify, once we close from everybody, we can only deliberate and not ask anymore, just wanted to make sure we covered that base. Fire, Fire Marshal, I just want to say, you've, you've are one of the most top-notch, you know, emergency-prepared member of our community, and I just want to remind everybody that you forced us to go to a four-hour training here. It was quite informative, but I don't think any of the council ever did that.
And thank you for that, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome.
I mean, no, thank you, exactly.
We did, we did, as, as a council, just wanted to make sure, everybody, it was, it was not open to the public, we all sat in a training to understand, and, and we learned, not only that, but we learned how an emergency happened, I'm not sure, did you see that?
I sat there.
Okay, so we learned, had the PowerPoint presentation, had a big old binder, had a lot of questions about, about an emergency and how it worked. And also, from my experience working for LA County, and as, as a council member in the Sacramento Valley Division, as we saw, you know, what happened in Paradise and, and what happened in Oroville, I was actually one of the people that was, I was visiting a friend and heard the early warning. When I was sitting in church, they shut it down, they said, get, pack your bags and leave, and that's exactly what I did. When I received the warning, I left without a problem, no traffic. It was those that decided to sit and waited out that experienced the traffic, and that's sometimes what happens, some people ignore the warning, and, and you do have, unfortunately, a situation where there are deaths. Sometimes I've, I've seen, you know, working in, you know, through county human services, that we do have to help mobilize more resources for those that are incapacitated to be able to move. Those are some of the deaths that we heard, because they weren't able to physically walk. You know, there were, there were other challenges, as you heard, you know, the, the gas runs out of the car, and they're not able to get the gas. So in, in hearing, you know, from my friends during that Oroville dam experience, it was, they didn't have enough gas in their car, they were waiting in lines to get gas, to get far enough, they were waiting too long to pack their bags, there was just a number of things. When it, when it comes to an emergency, there is no time, and, and, and I want to say that I appreciate that when our fire department is out giving us a list to learn how to pack and be prepared, no matter what, we should always all be prepared to evacuate immediately. It's not something we should take for granted. And then on top of that, heed the warnings, and I understand that our fire chief has given us recommendations, thanks to Measure O, to take a look at, you know, providing more notifications, and, you know, we live in a region where some of the notification systems can give some false alerts, you know, because we're trying to coordinate it. So say something's happening in Davis, all of us get the alert, so we're just trying to work out those kinks as we move forward in improving our emergency alert system. But I want to say that I appreciate all that you've done to help the residents of West Sacramento be prepared in case there is an emergency. I think we could always do more. While I appreciate, you know, learning more from our representatives here about how we have gaps, like you said, you may be on the internet, we need to take a look at that, and also informing, you know, one or more, they can sit in a four-hour training like we did, and learn all about what's happening. I, I don't mind doing that if that's what it takes for the community to feel safe and, and to take these, to take this seriously. So whatever we can do to support, you know, you, and that way support the community so that if such a situation happens, that we provide them with all the knowledge for an emergency evacuation. I'm not going to wait till 3,000 homes are built. I'm not going to wait for any, anything to happen, I think it should happen now, but I also, you know, realize that when we do build more housing and we have other issues, which our traffic person, I'll be asking him next, you know, that, that we're going to be addressing these situations as we move forward, because this is not just going to happen overnight, it's going to happen, you know, over the next 15, 20 years as we do housing construction. And I appreciate that you've been involved in the development of what's been happening, because included in this, in this, you know, developer, what I see developer agreements is the additional public safety resources as we have more housing. And with that, with Measure O, we are expanding the number of police officers and the number, you know, we have a whole new engine, we have 11 firefighters in the academy right now. We are building the resources to try to match the growth, and I anticipate that we will do more. So with that, I just want to say thank you so much.
Quick question, yes, Councilmember Akala, how often do we update our emergency plan? Do we do it every year? Is it fluid?
They're living document, they're updated as, as necessary. So like I mentioned, the last big formal completion, I guess, of the last was 2019, and so now we've got the newer version of 2024, that was, I think we finalized it September, October of last year. And then again, it's just coincidental that this, this subject has come up while we were working on the plan and all these, like, newer tools that we wanted to offer to the council, but we'll just continue doing.
We should sit in another four-hour training just for that.
I probably, there would be two-hour workshops, by the way, two-hour workshops.
I, I appreciated the training. I had lots of questions.
Thank you.
All right, one last thing, it should be noted that our hazard mitigation plan, it was just completed, they've been working on it for the last couple of years, Brian, who oversees it, and it will be coming to the council next month for approval. And so, yeah, they're constantly, all year long, putting meetings, trainings too, just saying, they're working on this all year long. We take emergency management serious, we work with all of our partners, we collaborate with them. I got to say, Reclamation, our flood control, that's a good group of people that really take it serious. And as far as communicating with the residents, there are several ways to communicate with the community in case of emergency, and Brian knows them well, you can talk about Everbridge, and he just sent a flyer out, I'll let you talk about that.
There's so many different elements to emergency management in general, alert and warning is, is huge, you know, it complements evacuation. If we can't communicate the message to you, how do you know what to do and to utilize those resources? So some of the, that we do on a, on a low level, priority level, social media, internet, everybody uses that. Everbridge or Alert Yellow, just rebranded from Yellow Alert, Alert Yellow is kind of the, if you're familiar with the reverse 911 concept, there's an emergency, we will call you and let you know. There are some limitations to that program, but worst case, we need to contact everybody. We use Wireless Emergency Alert, part of the IPAS program that the federal government runs, the, we go through the county to use it, but we can contact all the cell phones in a given area that we choose. So if there's a flood event or something, we set a PIN, set an area, and everybody's phone's going to be ringing with the message, you know, that they need that, so many different ways. And again, we have another plan, an alert and warning plan to complement this.
And, and what I will say, and Martha, we, we actually just experienced this in our area, there was a kiddo that was lost, a three-year-old. And again, most people wouldn't even know that this was happening last week, actually, literally in my neighborhood, and the police were searching, going door-to-door, and then they used this emergency, when we couldn't find the parents of this lost child, they said, we're going to, we're going to ping only in this geography so that everyone knows that this, this kiddo is actually missing, had wandered from their home, talk about scary. And again, it is, we do have these systems in place, and I think it is one of those things where you don't know about them until it comes time where you, you need them.
We will get a hold of you if we need to get a hold of you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, Ms. Council over there, you seem to be amused by something that you're reading. Does it have anything to do with this? Were you communicating with someone else, texting? Councilmember Akala, that's not a good at this time, please.
I'm, I'm just concerned, Mayor.
I just, can, can we not do that, just after this time?
All right, I think it's important to know.
I, I, I don't think it's part of the process at this time?
I think it's a fair question, though.
Okay, and I'm running it at this point?
I'm, I'm done asking.
Fair question.
Thank you, if you can please say your name, and if you can help us in responding to the appellate, the applicant, the public comment, and then we'll open it up for council to get questions.
Okay, Jason McCoy, I'm the supervising transportation planner and the transportation division manager for the city, been here for ten and a half years. Few things to unpack, I, I heard a lot of talk about bridges, I also heard failed bridges, which I was surprised to hear. Our bridges are moving forward that are planned, I'm assuming that by fail, it means we haven't seen the bridge move forward. So there are a few things to understand, one is that when you're dealing with movable bridges, you're dealing with something that is extremely complex, you're dealing with the need to do environmental documentation, both CEQA and NEPA, these documents are extensive, and it takes at least 10 years to get through this type of process. The I Street Bridge replacement, also known as the C Street Rail Yards Bridge, that has been moving forward through final design, the project is a partnership between ourselves and the city of Sacramento, with Sacramento being the lead on that bridge, and that bridge is moving forward, the final design should be complete by the end of this summer, and with any luck, we'll have all of the funding necessary in order to start advancing the construction. uh, in order to start advancing, uh, the construction bits and moving forward that project. Um, there are a couple of other bridges. I heard, uh, the Sutterville Bridge mentioned. I think it's really important to understand that back in 2010, there was something called the Sacramento River Crossing Study that looked at a number of different locations for any proposed, uh, crossing of the Sacramento River. That included the North Market and South Market area. North Market, uh, the alternatives that were looked at included the C Street and Rail Yards Bridge. That was the one that was selected to move forward in the North Market. In the South Market, there was Broadway Bridge that connected 15th Street and West Sacramento to Broadway as an alternative, as well as the Sutterville Road Bridge. Sutterville Road Bridge did not advance, and that is because it experienced an extensive amount of opposition from Caltrans, the California Department of Transportation, who was concerned about, uh, additional traffic going on to I-5 resulting in ridlock of the system. From the city of Sacramento and in particularly the residents in, uh, the city there that absolutely did not want to see that project move forward. They were concerned about, uh, traffic congestion. They were concerned about, uh, in particular, folks coming from West Sacramento into, uh, the Land Park neighborhood, which they didn't want to see happen. They were concerned about overtaxing their, uh, amenities over in Land Park. Uh, there were also a number of West Sacramento residents that were opposed to the Sutterville Road Bridge in particular because they did not want to see the potential for truck cut-through traffic. For those that are trying to avoid, uh, any congestion on I-5, to decide to drive through West Sacramento to cut through to the industrial areas and continue on to I-80. So based on all of that opposition, that alternative did not advance. What was selected to advance was Broadway Bridge. Now that bridge had received $3 million in grant funding to study the environmental impact of the bridge and to complete the preliminary design. Both of those were completed. We could actually move forward with advancing the final design of that bridge, but it does require an extensive amount of funding to make that happen. In general, you're talking about $14 million for a movable bridge of that size to advance through final design. For construction, you're talking about between $200 million and $350 million. To put that in perspective, the C Street Rail Yards Bridge is a $320 million project. We are receiving funding for that through the Highway Bridge Program because we are going to be eliminating a number of other bridges. So when I say bridges, I mean the approach ramps to the historic I Street Bridge. So Caltrans looked at that as a potential win-win. We get rid of the Jaboom, uh, uh, Bridge Approach, which is a pretty extensive structure. Uh, we get rid of the, uh, structure that goes into City of Sacramento, that's another structure. The approach ramp that goes up to the I Street Bridge in West Sacramento, we get rid of that. All of these get inspected by Caltrans. Caltrans looked at this as a, hey, you get this one bridge, we get rid of these approaches. So that's how we were able to secure some funding for that project. For other projects, like the Broadway Bridge, we do not have the Highway Bridge Program that we can utilize because we do not have other bridges that we would be eliminating or replacing. So as a result, we are very reliant on grant funding. Unfortunately, the latest word came down from the Department of Transportation that says in order for us to be, us being the state of California and all the cities within, to be considered for grant funding under this new administration, uh, we have to meet a lot of objectives that are actually illegal by state law. Things like we must, uh, help with deportation. So unfortunately, because state law prevents us from being able to do that sort of thing, we are going to be less able to get grant funding in the near future. So I just want to state that that is a fact. Uh, there is another bridge that I am currently working on, and that's thanks to the city council authorizing funding for looking at the Enterprise Crossing over the Deepwater Ship Channel. The city has, uh, an IOD, which is an irrevocable offer of dedication as part of the Southport, uh, industrial, uh, area that connects from, uh, Promenade Street at Southport Parkway across the Deepwater Ship Channel to Enterprise. We are currently studying that. Uh, we are looking at three different alternatives. A low-level bridge, a high-level bridge, and a movable bridge. All of which are going to require, again, extensive funds to advance. So as this environmental document progresses, I'll be bringing this to the city council and the public to review, provide comment, uh, and with, uh, any luck, we'll be able to advance that project, um, in the near future as well. Uh, I did hear, uh, a little bit about capacity. So with regard to the streets in West Sacramento, uh, and just, uh, with regard to Dr. Early's comment, uh, about, uh, modeling, all of traffic in our region is evaluated using what's called the SAC Sim model. And that's done by the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. The SAC Sim model, uh, it looks at a 2035 to 2050 condition for the entire region. The city of West Sacramento has our own model that we use based on the SAC Sim model. That model is done every time we're updating the general plan. Or when we're updating the general plan mobility element, that was last done in 2024. Uh, the engineering firm AECom did an analysis to the 2035 level. Uh, Councilmember Alcala, you asked about how much development is going to happen in these, uh, individual developments over what timeframe? Uh, that's a little hard to determine, but in the model, when you look at, uh, SECOG's regional model and our own model, it looks at 2035 and I'm, I'm going to estimate here, it's about 1,200 units out of all of those developments moving forward. So even in 2035, it's not anticipating build-out. We're not going to get there. Even at 2050, we're more than likely not going to be building out. So what we're already doing is as part of, uh, the next general plan update, our traffic engineer is looking at updating the model for a 2050 scenario. So not just 2035, but going beyond the general plan. That's going to be necessary for the next general plan update. It's going to be necessary for our traffic impact fee. Uh, it's going to be necessary for future projects. Uh, you know, to understand what impacts a, a future general plan amendment is going to have. Uh, there's a number of projects that are moving forward that aren't anticipated in the general plan. Uh, there's like a 200-unit housing development that's being proposed. So we need to be able to understand how that fits in the context of the entire area. So from a capacity standpoint, we already know that each of these developments, River Park, Yarborough, Liberty, they were already analyzed in the model. So we already know that based on their anticipated build-out up to 2035, they're not going to have a significant impact on the capacity of our roadway system. That's already in the general plan. Yes, there's traffic. I've been here for, you know, over 10 years. I have seen traffic increase. Uh, the more people have kids, they need a place to go. Uh, the regional model looks at in-migration and it looks at births. And that you have to be able to respond to increasing population. We're not going to tell people not to move here. We're not going to tell them to stop having kids. So we've got to be able to plan for it. So right now, I can tell you, our general plan has looked at it, it's planned for it. We know we can handle it.
Okay. And we're coming up to 11 o'clock. So I just want to, um, bring it back to council. I just want, um, city manager, city attorney, attorneys, can we, um, deliberate a little bit on the process up to 11 o'clock at this time?
You have no limitation. You can continue until you're done.
I am asking, thank you so much. Um, okay, just want to make sure.
If you're, if you're thinking of the Yarborough Settlement?
Yes.
Then of course, you haven't adopted that ordinance yet, so it doesn't apply. And even then, it would have you pause prior to 11 o'clock and the council would vote whether to continue.
Okay. Just want to make sure. That's why I said, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. McCoy. Okay. So I believe that council members will have questions for you, um, at this time. Any council member? Question? Good. Councilmember Alcala?
You answered my question.
It was excellent. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, it was very helpful background. Um, but that's because you've been here for... Would you like me to go through the, uh, checking on the credentials background? How long have you been here, Mr. McCoy, working for the city of LA? I mean, the city of West Sacramento, sorry.
I've been with the city of West Sacramento for ten and a half years. Prior to that, I worked for, uh, engineering firm, Mount McDonald, uh, working primarily on high-speed rail, uh, North Philadelphia Amtrak Station, um, while I'm working on Streetcar, uh, which, uh, before that, uh, I worked, uh, for RR and Design Group during community planning. Um, and I've got my master's in transportation and, uh, uh, undergrad in environmental studies and planning. So, you know, this is my bread and butter. It's what I've been doing for 30 years.
And, and you've accomplished, um, writing successful grants the city has received.
Uh, since I've been here, our division has brought in, uh, just a little over $50 million.
$50 million, help with our public transportation budget. And on top of that, I think your success includes building safer streets.
I'm really excited about that. I mean, I've heard a lot about folks who liked West Sac in the eighties, but I think it's gotten better with our trail system. Uh, we've got, you know, bike lanes now. Uh, we have more transit options than ever before. VIA, which we came up with the idea for that, was the first of its kind in the nation and really happy about that. So I think we're heading in the right direction mobility-wise.
And as a result of the planning, um, when we first started, we have more connectivity from the north to the south in order to get throughout the city, you know, um, as well.
Yep. And we continue to improve that. We've got the bridge over, uh, US-50 now connecting Sycamore Trail. Uh, we actually received, uh, another $3 million roughly, uh, in grants to look at, uh, the next bridge over the Barge Canal, uh, to connect with the Barge Canal Trail between, uh, Sycamore Trail. And then also looking at going north to Sacramento Avenue under the, uh, Capitol Corridor Railroad tracks.
And you referenced, um, you know, your appreciation to council for, um, the establishment of the Enterprise Bridge. And it can, you know, I know we haven't talked about it much. It's kind of too theoretical at this point. But just to put that out there, the timing of building and constructing a bridge. We, we've started that at this point and, and along the lines of the timing to get a bridge up and running.
Sure. It's, um, Enterprise is one of our next priorities over the C Street Rail Yards Bridge simply because the Enterprise Bridge is evaluated in our 2035 general plan as an improvement that needs to happen by 2035. So it's really essential that we have that additional link. Uh, we applied for and received authorization to get the Enterprise Bridge into Caltrans, uh, climate, uh, climate action plan, uh, as a, uh, secondary, uh, evacuation route in the future.
Okay.
Uh, so we are already looking with our eye toward expanding additional routes, uh, into and out of the city. Um, that is in, like I said, the 2035 timeframe. Broadway Bridge is in 2045, uh, timeframe. So it's already programmed in SECOG's, uh, regional plan as being a 2045 improvement. So we still have some time for that.
Is it too late to add any more bridges to the plan, to the general plan?
It's never too late. Uh, you can add any, uh, you know, we, we have a whole general plan process that includes, um, you know, getting public input, uh, getting council direction, getting input from our commission members. Um, anything that, you know, is necessary to do, uh, should be in the general plan.
There have been residents who expressed concern about, um, building more housing and what happened to the Sutterville Bridge, as I explained, pretty much along the same lines that you described. Is it still possible to put the Sutterville Bridge back on the general plan?
You could, but this is one of those, uh, improvements that absolutely needs to have buy-in from, uh, primarily needs to have buy-in from Caltrans because you are connecting directly to Caltrans facilities. Uh, you have to have buy-in from the city of Sacramento, uh, because obviously it's, it's going to impact them. Uh, you also need to have buy-in from SECOG. So, um, all of these entities need to be at the table and everybody needs to come to an agreement. Broadway Bridge is a bridge that, uh, was agreed to by both cities to advance. However, it's not the priority of the city of West Sacramento right now because, as I said, 2035 Enterprise is. For the city of Sacramento, it's not their priority either. They are really focused on the Truxell Bridge, uh, getting across from Richards Boulevard to Truxell. After that bridge is done, after Enterprise is done, I think it's very likely that, you know, we'll be looking at other connections. And that could be either going back to, uh, Broadway, which we already have the environmental clearance for, uh, or if there is another option to go back to Sutterville. If there's concurrence from the region and concurrence from Sacramento, I don't see why that couldn't happen. However, the same issues are going to come up again.
Okay. And on traffic, the traffic issues that were raised, you did speak a little bit. Are you the bright person to ask about the traffic situation?
I'm the manager of the transportation division. So under me is, is our traffic engineer as well as our, uh, senior transportation planner and our associate-level planner.
So you are it. Okay, great. So yes, there, there is, um, a lag time when, if there was a traffic accident, you know, um, I, I've experienced it personally where the timing can go from, you know, 20 minutes to 45 minutes to an hour. You're stuck in the city, um, even if traffic is being redirected. Um, it's going to take a while to get out. Um, and and it's, uh, and, you know, during peaks, you know, some time periods. And, and I understand we're figuring ways out to reduce that, such as, um, uh, the lighting, you know, the traffic lights, just get synchronizing them a little bit. Are there any other plans to help improve that?
Uh, I am working on advancing, uh, what's called West Sac Forward. I've applied for, uh, just under half a million on that and we'll be matching that with funds already allocated by city council uh, to look at transit priority, signal priority, and to look at, um, ways of speeding up transit in general. Uh, that could include, uh, jump lanes, uh, signal prioritization. Um, there's a number of, uh, you know, time signals down, say, Jefferson Corridor so that each of the signals, uh, winds up flowing faster. Um, with regard to evacuation, I think it's important to remember that if something does happen, God forbid, uh, you're not just dealing with, you know, one side of the street that you're going to be forced to go on while other people are going toward danger. Both sides of the street will then flush out. So you'll, you know, we'll be relying on our first responders and, um, you know, PD, fire departments come out. And as they mentioned, they'll, they'll, we'll know, hopefully, things in advance, um, in order to have a traffic control plan in place to get people out. Um, to give you an idea, uh, we've been working together for the last year on, uh, the A's coming into town. We know that with the A's coming into town, there's going to be a lot of folks coming in. There's going to be a lot of folks staying. We know that there's, you know, capacity on the roadways to handle this, but we're relying on our coordination amongst our different departments to figure out, okay, do we need to close off a certain segment of the street, which we are planning, like Tower Bridge Gateway, for instance, so that we can flush people across Tower Bridge, flush people, uh, to the west to, you know, go to different parts of the city, go down, uh, Southport. We've relocated all of the, um, uh, VIA and, uh, Uber, Lyft over to Seventh and TBG to stay out of the way. We've worked with our transit agencies like YOLO TD to put in sweeps, that's two buses going at the same time, uh, to come in and they can actually go through the closed streets in order to get more people to use transit. Uh, we're working on potential offerings where, hey, show us, uh, you know, your, your, uh, ticket and, you know, you get a free ride on transit, you know, that sort of thing.
And we're going to get a, a good transportation briefing on that in one of the future council meetings, I think.
If I, I could just add, um, because I, I want to, you know, just reiterate, uh, this is all great information, great questions. I understand where they're coming from. Uh, what we're doing tonight is looking at sort of the, the merits of the EIR and, and the map that's under appeal. Um, and on that note, I, I, the reason I'm chiming in here is not to cut you off. Uh, it's to note that remember what's next with the project should the appeal, um, uh, if the project moves forward, uh, there's a development agreement. There's a specific plan with this project. And a lot of the topics that are being, um, asked about tonight. And a lot of the topics that are being asked about tonight, they'll have a lot more relevance when you see the DA. So on that note with traffic, for example, there are several commitments not to get ahead of the process, but the development will actually be funding directly, both reimbursements for improvements the city's already done, also future roadway improvements that will be extremely relevant to topics like traffic. So I think what we're talking about tonight is the EIR analyzed all these topics on the basis of its consistency with the general plan and, you know, are there adequate mitigations, that sort of thing? And so I just want to make sure that we're sticking with, you know, sort of that overarching framework.
And I think we'll be expanding Jefferson with the Yarborough Road, so that'll be expanded.
Right.
And that does play into an exit or, or, you know, for the entire city, if there's a flood, even though it's another project and that other project is working on it, it does speak a little bit to the evacuation.
Right, south of Linden, it'll be widened out to a four-lane facility.
Okay, good to know.
So I think a lot of what Jason's covering are things that the city's doing, you know, independent of what's happening with this project or other projects in Southport. But just more of a reminder that, you know, with the project itself tonight, whether it's a mitigation in the EIR or a term of development agreement, there are several really extensive improvements that this project will be responsible for, either providing itself or paying for that address particularly traffic. So just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
And I'm confident that the project is consistent. The EIR does match up with the general plan, particularly because I know that the model was developed in the 2035 timeframe back in 2016. I know that the traffic model for this is consistent with the general plan, so I'm confident that this is not going to be a surprise when it moves forward.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Mr. McCoy. Public infrastructure. Wanted to give you a chance to provide any comments from what you've heard from the appellant, the applicant, and public comment, and any questions council may have for you.
Well, I heard a concern regarding de-watering. The approval that requires that they comply with Section 22 if the city engineer determines that de-watering is required.
Oh, you can't hear. Sorry, didn't know what that's.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, regarding de-watering, if it's determined that the city engineer decides that de-watering is required and that's based on the water table and the depth trenching and that sort of thing, of course. And we have Section 22, which gives, outlines a very comprehensive analysis that needs to be done in the event of de-watering. There's an analysis of the soil parameters, the depth, the zone of influence of the drawdown, and any improvements that are located within that zone of influence, such as domestic wells, flat work structures. There's a survey that's done prior to the de-watering. There's a survey that's done following the de-watering and any impacts are identified and and I don't want to say the blame, but the contractor is made responsible for it. So that's how that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what other, I'm not sure what other public infrastructure questions were brought up that haven't already been addressed.
Are you the one that might be familiar with the Davis Road Buffer? Is that familiar?
No.
Nope, I think everybody else answered a lot of the questions that we've had.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think there was another question regarding the channel, that Blacker Channel.
Yeah.
And the fact that, you know, this, this project is draining to it.
Yes.
And, you know, with any subdivision improvement, there's, there's an increase in the impervious area and there's an increase in runoff. This project is being designed to drain to a detention facility, which attenuates the flows and limits the outflow to the channel to the available capacity. We have a drainage master plan that has identified the drainage system for the entire Southport area. This project is consistent with that. We've identified target outflows and there will not be an adverse impact to the channel as a result of this project.
That's helpful to know. Thank you.
Just, just on that, and I just want to reflect back. So there won't be an adverse. Is there actually going to be an added benefit then by doing this or it'll just operate the same?
Channel itself, it'll just, it'll operate the same.
Okay.
Added benefit, if there's local ponding, that sort of thing with the development of this project, you know, it's going to have a drainage system that's going to convey all of the runoff to this facility. So if, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with the buffer, the Davis Road, or if there was one at the time, but the redevelopment of this area is going to address the drainage for that entire area and potentially, along with the levy improvements and everything that's else that's occurred down there, going to alleviate the need for such a buffer. We're not only looking at mitigation of the increased flows within the boundary of the project. We're also ensuring that there are no adverse impacts to the perimeter.
I see.
That we're not blocking.
So it's going to flow better? Am I, am I getting?
Yeah.
That does sound like an added benefit, sir.
Yeah. We've got surface flow, we've got uneven areas, we've got ponding. We're going to have pipes that convey.
Thank you. In the photos that you saw where there was, did you see the photos?
I couldn't really see them, no.
You didn't see them, huh? Because we saw some flooding in some areas. I think it was on Harmon Road or, I don't know if it'll help, because it sounds like there was some drainage that was over a period of time with something that happened that those, that the drainage has been eliminated and that's why you have these big pools of water today. And I don't know what that's about, but.
Well, I'm trying to think of what project that's developed down there that might have actually led to that. I think it's just naturally occurring. I mean, you drive through the county and you see flooded ag bills all over.
And if, yeah, if this... So that was a photo that was used and I'm, given that it's presented to us, I'm just curious and I'd be willing to work with you to learn more about how to resolve that.
Yeah.
Okay. Because we don't want to ignore the complaints presented of this.
Absolutely not.
That's it? All right, moving right along.
No, I, I don't have a question. I have a question for this city attorney. So just, I just want to make sure.
We don't close it, yes.
Yeah, that's the only thing.
Please ask your question. Which city attorney? Not you.
I think that's really, I actually think that's really important for the council members to know. I'm not a city attorney.
You're the council.
I'm just here to work for the mayor and I'm not, I'm not, have nothing to do with the subject matter in this. I'm not giving any advice on the subject matter on this. I'm strictly here to advise the mayor on the hearing process and making sure that everybody gets heard that wants to be heard. I'm not a subject matter expert. I am strictly here for that limited purpose. That is it. So that is why I'm here, so.
And I appreciate your help. Thank you so much.
And I just think it's important to let that be known. I just want to be, because it's been interchangeably saying city attorney. Mr. Mitchell is your city attorney. I'm just an advisor.
I think I've only called you council. Is that okay?
And I, and I wasn't referring to you when I asked for city attorney. I mean, I...
I just think, I think it's good because I think it's really important for all the city council members to know what my role is. It has nothing to do with either project, nor does it have anything to do with what's on the agenda. It's strictly what is the process, how we do this, what we're going.
So no funny business texting.
Yes, this is correct.
I'm joking. I couldn't help it.
I understand. This is a hot topic. I get it. But I just wanted to let everybody know who I am.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure if we're, since we're referring to
Council.
our hearing officer here and with respect to the process, earlier when councilmember Ocala interjected, he had mentioned that we needed to get back on topic and I want to make sure that we're following accordingly so that way we can move forward with this process. I know we've had a lot to cover.
That's correct. And in fairness, I wanted to just make sure we didn't. None of the council members have been given the opportunity to ask any questions yet of the appellant or the applicant. But I wanted to make sure that that happened before you close the hearings. But for example, if councilmember Ocala, councilmember Roscoe had a question for Mr. Goddard, I wanted to make sure they had the chance to do that. And same thing with the project. So I just wanted to make sure because we're going to, if it got missed, I'd have to slam here.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. It's up to you. Do you want to ask the question to the city attorney?
Yeah, I think it'll be, so we've, we've addressed a lot of things, but one of the other things that did get brought up and I, and I just want to highlight it, and I think it's important to ask. What are the current contribution limits in West Sacramento for city council? So as we're running.
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars. Over the past decade, because that was recently changed to five hundred dollars, I think in the past year. What was it prior to that?
You had, well, you had two fifty then, depending on whether someone contributed money to their own account, it went up to their own campaign.
Can we just like start off with how this applies and then?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we heard during testimony, we heard quite a bit, was one, this whole entire council is beholden, and I might not be using the exact language, to developers, that these votes can't be, shouldn't be purchased by developers. In fact, we actually heard from Goddard that, you know, I'm not saying you all would do it, but that in certain cities, that does happen. And so I thought it was important just to level set what are the contribution limits here? And I will speak for me, I won't speak for anyone else. But at two hundred and fifty dollars, at five hundred dollars, none of our, none of my votes are for sale. My ethics aren't for sale. And so the decisions that I will be voting on and making here are not based on contributions that I have received. No amount of dollars can buy my votes, my values, or my ethics. Definitely not two hundred and fifty dollars and definitely not five hundred dollars. And so I think that is important to note and flag because it was insinuated that that could be the case for our city council and which is why I really wanted to level set what are our contributions, what that contribution looks like, and the max that you could get per individual would be at this point, five hundred dollars, and it used to be two hundred and fifty dollars. And so wanted to flag that. And I think that's important just for the public to know. We know that because we live it, but sometimes the public doesn't know that. And so I thought that was important.
I should add that in the context of campaign contributions from a developer or someone who is appearing before you, that limit is actually two hundred and fifty.
And there you go. Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Can I just add? And I appreciate your, you know, comments. I don't want to, you know, if, if somebody from the public comes with that conclusion, that's their opinion.
Absolutely, but I do think it's important to, to address that.
As council members, we will be subject to judge, be judged, to be criticized and so I think, and only because you've said it, but I just wanted to distinguish myself, that I think that if, if the contributions are public information, people will make a judgment call on your contribution. And in fact, five hundred dollars is, has been allowed as the two fifty cap goes up. Once you comply with certain rules, anybody can give you a five hundred dollar check. It was two fifty up until, I think, this year. It goes up to five hundred. Now they raised the limit. And, you know, and I don't know how far back that went, but the, but the limit was raised to five hundred, both for the city and the state, by the way, even though we have a council decision here.
Who would have to refuse herself at two fifty? I think that's what the city attorney.
It's five hundred now.
No, he actually just clarified that.
The local campaign contribution limit is five hundred. State law has a separate set of rules that apply to contributions from parties that are appearing before you. As opposed to just a general contribution.
The state law, I think, changed to five hundred last year.
Is that effective this year?
It is effective this year.
Well, that's the case, then I apologize.
No, no, no. I mean, we started off actually saying, if you remember, we started this whole, and it was hours ago.
I don't want to, I don't want to go over.
No, no, no. I appreciate that. But you were speaking for yourself and I appreciate that. I was speaking for myself. And I, and for me, appreciate the fact that someone could go look it up. The savvy person could know those things. Not everyone's going to either have the time, the wherewithal. And so since this is public information and it is easier just to name those things, I wanted to make sure we elevated that view.
Right. So... Are we done with that?
I'm good. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I just want to make sure we cover what's in our procedure guide here, that we do have the opportunity to ask both the appellant and the applicant questions. Does anybody have any questions for, because we've asked all the staff our questions. Do we have any questions we'd like to ask the appellant or the applicant? No? Okay. All right, with that, we, no more questions to, just ask one more time? And I just want to check in with our...
You're correct.
Are we okay? Are we on track?
Yep. Make sure there's no other questions before you close.
All right, we will, now at this point, we have heard from all the parties and received their evidence. I will now close the hearing. The council will now deliberate and adopt the findings if appropriate. Just one, two.
Mayor, I have, I have a question. We've heard some testimony from Mr. McCoy and from Chief. Do we consider that in the deliberations?
Yes, you can consider that.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. No, that's.
That's a process question.
Anything you've heard in this...
Who do we turn to here?
Anything you've heard in this hearing that's been accepted by you as the hearing, as the hearing officer essentially of this appeal, you can consider any questions that were asked and any answers that were given can all be considered. It's all evident. So yes, anything can be.
Okay. Question? Thank you so much, council member. Any other questions? Now, look at our next action here. Our next action is to conduct the public hearing, adopt the resolution.
You do have in your packet, actually you had handed out to you a slightly modified resolution. If that's the direction the council wants to go.
We have a modified one, right?
And the modification was simply to reflect the fact that Keasling's appeal was with.
Yes, that's why it's modified.
Right, that was the modification.
Mr. Keasling did settle.
Resolution twenty-five thirty-one, attachment eighteen.
Adopt twenty-five thirty-one, attachment eighteen, as modified with the documents that we received tonight because it was done yesterday, was done before the side was in. And for our council here, quick question. So this is okay to move forward at this point to adopt the revised one?
Well, I mean, people, you have to, yes, vote.
Okay.
But yes, you would make a vote. That's what you believe. That is the recommendation of the court and you would recommend a vote.
Do you have any questions? You do not want to vote?
Oh, I want to vote.
Okay. I need, we need, this is the next, this is the, we either take a vote, adopt?
Yeah, I just, I want to just say one thing that, you know, I'm, I'm sure is obvious, but I think it is important to just state, is that we all live here. And I know that feels and seems obvious and particularly for myself and the mayor who live in the Southport area, this is a decision that we don't take lightly. It impacts us, it impacts our families. And, and so at least for me, as I'm making this decision, it is based on all the information that, that we have, have gotten. But also not only the safety of the residents that we're charged with, but also simply the safety of my children, my family as well. And so I think that's just important to know. And with that, I make a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation concerning the second appeal by Kimmergottard, and it remains unchanged. Did I say that right?
Did she say that correctly?
She did, yes. And the resolution that you are proposing to adopt is the modified resolution. And the resolution that you are proposing to adopt is the modified resolution.
Just before we move forward, does anybody else have any comments? Because I just want to make sure we eliminate the commentary and just keep it clean. We'll just hold off on your motion, then we'll do it again.
Yeah, we need a second.
Yeah, just want to make sure, anybody have any comments before we close it? I, I do, I do want to add some comments, that flood protection has been, as a resident, before I even got onto council, you know, during my, my role as chair of the planning commission, when the general plan update was adopted, it has always been something that I've taken a look at very seriously, and taken a look at the housing, taking a look at the Southport framework plan, and making sure that we are in compliance as all of these projects were being adopted, I've been watching closely. Planning commissioners that are on the planning commission, are planning commissioners that have taken the time to thoroughly study and evaluate what was before them, with a level of expertise and understanding. They, they were planning commissioners that were approved by the entire council with their recommendation, who have known these individuals, and we value their input. Some of them live in the Southport area, and others do not, they live in the north, but that's why, you know, with the, you know, with the districts, we try to have representation throughout the entire city. And, you know, I just read, you know, somewhere in the comments about the criticism about the planning commission, and they're, they're not weak, they're very strong, we value their contribution, and, you know, that they have presented and represented the, the city well in their decision, their unanimous decision. And this particular applicant has taken the time to, over the years, many, many years, and Terry Teepel, has taken the time to meet with residents in particular, over the many years, to explain what's going on in Liberty and to provide some insight. So with that, I know that, you know, it's, I haven't heard any complaints until today, all of a sudden, I just, all these complaints are incredibly new to me, but they're also common concerns that we will be taking into consideration as we continue to grow and, you know, develop the city. We haven't ignored them, we, we are listening and wanting to make sure that they are thoroughly addressed. When sometimes you, you sensationalize it as flood and we're all going to drown, you know, that, that, that threat of fear and panic is, is not productive in our community. What is productive, which is why we all took the time to ask the staff the questions, is because we want to inject the truth and knowledge, and that's what, that's what guides all of us, and our, and our moral compass to educate the public, and I think we could do more. I think, I think we've heard from our staff that, you know, we can do more, and I would like to do that as well. So, just with that, I think that's one of the reasons why we are asking a lot of the questions, because we want to, you know, provide more clarity for the public on what it is that is happening in our city, and greatly appreciate the staff taking the time. Write the memos, read the memos, they're on the website, and to listen to this meeting, because it provided some substantive information for the community to learn and to know more about, and definitely we'll have more town halls in the future to answer any more questions, to provide any more clarification, to address any concerns as we move forward, because I like to make sure that the citizens do not feel ignored. You know, they may not appreciate the decision that's being made today, but from the majority of the residents that I have spoken to, they, they are looking forward to the Liberty project here to move forward, in the many years that I have been speaking with the community members. So with that, we will go on to the action, since nobody else has any comments or things or anything, okay? Council member Early?
I make a motion to adopt the modified staff's recommendation concerning the appeal. Jeff, yes, acceptable?
That'll do.
All right.
If there is no second?
There's a
Oh, okay. Council member, I'll call you seconded, okay?
No, I'm not, I'm Orozco.
Sorry, council member Orozco, you seconded, okay. Thank you for that. And madam clerk, council member Early moved. Council member Orozco seconded, please call the roll.
Council member Ocala?
Aye.
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
This item is approved. Next is our consent agenda items four through six, are there any requests to remove an item for questions or a presentation? Need requested for a presentation? Not? I'll ask madam clerk, are there any requests to speak on consent agenda items four through six?
Jennifer, are there any public comments on close, I mean, I'm sorry, consent items?
We have no requests to speak on the consent agenda.
Get Burna in here? Awesome. Is she still back there?
Yes.
Bring her back.
Thank you.
Back.
Welcome back. Did I get that right?
Welcome back, Carter.
Would you like to have any items pulled from consent agenda item four through six? No? I'll accept a motion.
Early moves.
Second.
Great, council member early moved, we had two seconds, which one wants to take ownership? Council member Ocala, council member, okay. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Ocala?
Aye.
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sopizio-Hull?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
We do not have any regular agenda items, next is function part two, do we have any reports from council?
Thank you.
Okay, council, calendar?
No, no calendar updates tonight, and I will not have a manager's report either.
City attorney?
Nothing to report.
Adapt direction from city council members. We have a couple of future agenda item requests here to review, on, if I can, if you can take a look at it, and let me know if you're okay with them. We have two, one from council member Sopizio-Hull, we'll start with that one, if you want to make a motion, council member. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I'd like to have council bring forward a proclamation for Transgender Day of Visibility at our next
And I'll accept a second?
Early second.
Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Ocala?
Aye.
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sopizio-Hull?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
This item is approved, next we have
Just a, just a chime, is normally, you know, part of what we do here is, you know, I give you a sense of when those items will be coming forward. So that one is, is obviously a, a March date, so we'll be bringing that one back on March nineteenth. On the, on the other one, I just want to provide a recommendation on this one, just given the nature of the request, spoke with council member Orozco earlier today, this is something that staff can definitely do, I think, just in terms of the protocol with how we typically do proclamations, we try to keep them around, you know, dates of significance or, you know, you know, typical proclamations topics. This one, my recommendation would be that we do it as, we use our other process, which would be a mayor proclamation, but we do it in a way that, you know, the councilor who requested it can work with the mayor in terms of how it's presented, so our recommendation would be to have staff prepare it, and then work with the two of you to coordinate how to present it. So, just my recommendation, we, we, we would advise sort of against doing, kind of making it the norm where we start to look at individuals or individual businesses in terms of council proclamation presentations.
Let's see.
Just to keep it manageable.
I, I understand. So, I definitely willing to have a mayor proclamation for you to deliver. Okay, thank you. We will not take any action on this item. And I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Early seconds.
Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Ocala?
Aye.
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sopizio-Hull?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
We are now adjourned, thank you.
Oh, money.